Hello, just testing the mic to see if you guys can hear me. Great, thanks Sarah. Hi, Shari.
Good evening, everyone. Make sure my mic's working here. Can you hear me?
Test, test one, two.
I think it's committee of the whole, so I think it's just for the YouTube maybe.
It's on YouTube.
Check it out, this is a little longer.
Okay, check, check, test, test.
Test, no.
Check, check, test. Good evening, everyone. Make sure my mic's working here. Can you hear me?
Test, test one, two.
I think it's committee of the whole, so I think it's just for the YouTube maybe.
Yeah.
It's on YouTube.
It's just you can't hear us.
Check it out, this is a little longer. Okay, check, check, test, test.
Test, no.
Check, check, test. Good evening, everyone. Is this mic working? Yeah, okay. No volume? Okay, oh, there we go, hey, there we go.
It was coming, he just had to get there.
Great. Yeah, thanks for being here tonight at this committee of the whole meeting. If I could just indulge something personal for a moment, I would just like to wish a happy birthday to my six-year-old daughter, Island. Happy birthday, Island.
I didn't do that.
Yeah, yeah.
That was my suggestion, sorry.
Thank you. And, yeah, just wanted to really quickly say that it's pretty packed in here and I realized that not everybody got a seat. And if we had known that it was going to be this well-attended, we maybe would have chosen a bigger venue. And in the future, we can look into that, just so that we make sure that we can fit everybody comfortably. These meetings can be long, and I apologize to anyone who ends up having to stand, so thanks. So, I'll just call this meeting to order. I would like to start by acknowledging and recognizing that we work, live, and play in the city of Port Alberni, which is situated on the unceded territories of the Saschat and the Hoopisheet First Nations. Are there any late items by committee members? No, okay. Late items by the corporate officer?
No late items, Chair.
Okay. And I would just like to give notice that tonight is being video-recorded, livestreamed, and recorded, and broadcast on YouTube. So, this meeting will be viewable later on. Could somebody kind of get a motion for adoption of the minutes, unless there are any...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, agenda, I move that the agenda be approved as circulated.
Apologies, I missed that.
It's okay.
Second, all right, all in favor? Unopposed? Onto adoption.
Oh, gotta wait for the mayor and councillor, yes.
Okay, that's right, this is gonna, there's a few moving parts here I gotta get used to. I haven't chaired many meetings, so you'll have to bear with me tonight, thank you. All right, unopposed.
We can hear you now, so this is a good start.
Okay. All right, then, onto the adoption of the minutes. Are there any comments on the minutes of the previous meeting?
Motion to adopt, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Second, all in favor? Carried. So now, we're going to have a public input period. And just one bit of housekeeping, so we discourage clapping or booing, just to make sure that everybody is comfortable to come up to the mic. Even though clapping seems positive, if we clap one opinion, it might make somebody who has an opposing opinion feel uncomfortable to step up to the mic. So, we will take six speakers for five minutes each. Is there anyone who would like to approach the mic? Carolyn's up like a shot, all right.
Oh, you gotta press the red button.
Yeah, press the red button, and if you could just, sorry.
Yeah, and then red is good.
Yep. And if you could just state your name and your place of residence, please.
Okay. Hello, Mayor and Councillor? Carolyn Jaskin, 4041 Warlock Avenue. So, it's impossible to go through life and have no regrets, but to be in the moment when it's decision time and ask yourself, "Will I regret this later?", is powerful. Oftentimes, business and politics gets in the way of doing what is right, particularly tonight, as I see. Philippine Mars, and the Mars program in general, is a political lightning rod and symbolic with what's wrong in the valley. Port Alberni has long been advertised as the worst place to live in Canada for years. In aviation, the plane is always heard. Likewise, the Philippine is expressing its concerns to all pertinent powers and bureaucrats, who have failed to deliver and is speaking up for itself and its people, who have been disenfranchised around her. The bombers have such a connection to the people of our valley and a deep heritage and tourism value. We are the last of the mill towns, industrial towns. We are once the richest per capita in Canada and an ultimate fishing town in a bustling port city. Much of our history and heritage has either been bumped, sorry, burned, or turned down, or taken away over the years. We've always had to try and compete with Tofino out here on the west coast for any tourism dollars driving by. Ironically, one of our main attractions is a simple boat launch. We are now a much-divided community in transition, looking to change that narrative around. I believe the Philippine, with her actions and fatigue, is speaking loud and clear to the powers-to-be and the people of our valley that she wants to go home permanently. Her home is the Alberti Valley, Port Alberni, where the people that have truly cared for them will welcome her with open arms. We are town grieving, and not just for the Mars. We have lost a lot over many years, and particularly the last 20. There are two scenarios presenting right now that could potentially see her remain home. We collectively could come together to make it happen. One would be the private-owned base connecting to the provincial campground at Sprout Lake. And the other, my favorite, is on the five acres of city industrial land that has already recently opened up on our old industrial waterfront. The old Sawmass sawmill site, where they fought off a fire in the hog fume pile, where she potentially could join all the rest of our industrial heritage collections. A vibrant space where retired idle hands restore and display collections and look after them. A space where maker spaces, marine-related industries could sprout from. Workers and retirees could choose to live nearby with new housing and accommodations that is needed. A new larger boat launch is badly needed in the valley, and this could accommodate Philippines' arrival. A marina and RV hookups could also generate commerce, tourism, and revenue, while keeping idle hands busy in socializing with locals and the visitors. It would be a unique attraction on the waterfront, and I say "unique" because we don't have a lot of uniqueness left here. I'm here looking to counsel for a stay of execution from Philippine Mars and looking for a commitment to reserve a portion of the Sawmass land so she can spend eternity overlooking the water, watching the working harbor and the fish go by as they make their journey back home as a static display. Time is running out, and crucial now. I'm just learning that the legacy of McLean's Mill could not be overcome with local government in order to keep one here, as per contract negotiations with Timber West upon the sale to Colson to donate one to the city of Port Alberni. Might I remind Councillor that McLean's Mill resides in the ACRD. The common citizens, the bread and butter in this valley, had no say on the bomber and wrongly assumed one would stay. Philippine is absolutely the largest piece of this puzzle in Port Alberni that helps drive people to come here to see her. We will always regret letting her slip away. I have many people on Amara's Facebook page and in this community, including myself, committing to donate monies to keep her here. It is unfortunate that the community wasn't asked to help sooner rather than later. I believe in fate and timing, and right now, the timing couldn't be any better, to all collectively work together and across borders to heed the wishes of the plane and her people. It's funded to the impossible, that's when we shine, if given the opportunity. And what a community builder it would be to finally bring this very divided valley together. What an ultimate fishing down we could be. She's tired, bosses, she's tired, as are the people of this valley that fought long and hard for her and where she retired to long ago and was ignored. So I'm asking you now to open your hearts and minds and ears and just listen, and commit as quick as you can to try and help keep her here now. I think if we can fold the salmon festival together in under a couple weeks, seriously, City Council can reach out to Colsons and PMA and get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Is there anyone else who would like to, gentlemen in the front? Please just state your name and your place of residence.
My name's Keith Ambrose, 3147 Second Avenue. Not for long, hopefully. I'm here, I'm sorry to interfere with some of the people who are actually here for the Heritage Society, but I got some things to say. You guys sent me a letter here, "We want to hear from you", it says. And it concerns a liquor license down the street, and it turns out you guys, you put this in the mail when there was a mail strike. And I got it a month late, and you guys passed off this decision to the province. Thank you very much for that, including the people who are absent here tonight, obviously. And I'm mad, because you can see I'm mad. I'm mad because I think I got shifted over to this meeting because I wanted to be a committee at last night's meeting when more people were in attendance, I was going to direct this to. I'm going to switch the subject, though. Communication with the public is obviously out when it comes to property. When it comes to housing, you guys just rubber stamp it and screw every neighborhood in this valley. And Island Health, thank you very much for that, you guys are helping them quite nicely, but this valley's going downhill, boys, girls. So, Mr. Verboogie, I want to direct the next comments to you. First of all, welcome to council, sir. I voted for you for mayor. I'm still angry about the reverse racism that was prevalent that day at the meeting for prospective councillors and mayor. I'll talk about that with you later, but I'm going to challenge you, sir. I'm going to stop and I'm going to ask Mr. Todd Petola there, oh, sorry. Thank you for suggesting we cut some firefighter time back, thank you, sir. Thank you. Firefighters are some of the most overpaid individuals in this valley. They're great to have, especially when there's a fire, everybody needs them. But their services are not exactly what I want. I certainly don't want them wasting their time doing what paramedics are supposed to be doing, the province is supposed to be paying for. So, Mr. Verboogie, back to you. I'm going to challenge you on this one. Sir, you're a businessman, like I was, I'm a retired millwright, and I'm now a grandfather. So now I'm thinking into the future, I couldn't give a damn about myself, but I sure care for my grandson. I want to ask you to do something, sir, and it might be against your grain, but I'm going to ask you to do this for this valley. You're a brand-new politician, would you please make a motion, not at tonight's meeting, on your own time, think about it, I'm asking you to do it, to retrieve those wages that this council voted for themselves in a time where restraint was necessary and we're all facing really difficult times? I myself am a pensioner, I live on $1,062 a month with my partner. I had to give up a lot of things, I had to budget a lot of things. I got a nice property in town, but I live in the country where I want to live, by the way, by choice. I live on a homeless camp, my own, just me and my partner, it's the most beautiful camp you ever saw. But it's a homeless camp nonetheless, I live on the roadside like my people did before me. And I'm budgeting, I got rid of TELUS, Fordus, the banks. I'm budgeting, sir. So I'm asking you, I'm just challenging you as a man, you're a brand-new councillor, this will do you some good, actually, I think, just think about this subject and suggest that we retrieve the raise that these councillors gave themselves. to all collectively work together and across borders to heed the wishes of the plane and her people. It's fun to do the impossible. That's when we shine, if given the opportunity. And what a community builder it would be to finally bring this very divided valley together. What an ultimate fishing down we could be. She's tired, bosses. She's tired, as are the people of this valley that fought long and hard for her and where she retired to long ago and was ignored. So I'm asking you now to open your hearts and minds and ears and just listen and commit as quick as you can to try and help keep her here now. I think if we can fold the salmon festival together in under a couple of weeks, seriously, city council can reach out to Colson's and PMA and get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Is there anyone else who would like to, gentlemen in the front? Please just state your name and your place of residence.
My name's Keith Ambrose, 3147 Second Avenue. Not for long, hopefully. I'm here, I'm sorry to interfere with some of the people who are actually here for the Heritage Society, but I got some things to say. You guys sent me a letter here. "We want to hear from you", it says, and it concerns a liquor license down the street. And it turns out, you guys, you put this in the mail when there was a mail strike. And I got it a month late, and you guys passed off this decision to the province. And thank you very much for that, including the people who are absent here tonight, obviously. And I'm mad, because, you can see I'm mad. I'm mad, because I, I think I got shifted over to this meeting because I wanted to be a committee at last night's meeting when more people were in attendance. I was going to direct this to, I'm going to switch the subject, though. Communication with the public is obviously out when it comes to property. When it comes to housing, you guys just rubber stamp it and screw every neighborhood in this valley. And island health, thank you very much for that. You guys are helping them quite nicely, but this valley's going downhill, boys, girls. So, Mr. Verboogie, I want to, I want to direct the next comments to you. First of all, welcome to council, sir. I voted for you for mayor. I'm still angry about the reverse racism that was prevalent that, that day at the meeting for prospective councillors and mayor. I'll talk about that with you later, but I'm going to challenge you, sir. I'm going to stop and I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Todd Petola there, oh, sorry. Thank you for suggesting we cut some firefighter time back. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Firefighters are some of the most overpaid individuals in this valley. They're great to have, especially when there's a fire, everybody needs them. But their services are not exactly what I want. I certainly don't want them wasting their time doing what paramedics are supposed to be doing, the province is supposed to be paying for. So, Mr. Verboogie, back to you. I'm going to challenge you on this one. Sir, you're a businessman, like I was. I'm a retired millwright, and I'm now a grandfather. So now I'm thinking into the future, I couldn't give a damn about myself, but I sure care for my grandson. I want to ask you to do something, sir, and it might be against your grain, but I'm going to ask you to do this for this valley. You're a brand-new politician. Would you please make a motion, not at tonight's meeting, on your own time, think about it, I'm asking you to do it, to retrieve those wages that this council voted for themselves in a time where restraint was necessary and we're all facing really difficult times? I myself am a pensioner. I live on 106, sorry, $1,062 a month with my partner. I had to give up a lot of things. I had to budget a lot of things. I got a nice property in town, but I live in the country where I want to live, by the way, by choice. I live on a homeless camp, my own. Just me and my partner, it's the most beautiful camp you ever saw. But it's a homeless camp nonetheless. I live on the roadside like my people did before me, and I'm budgeting. I got rid of Telus, Fordus, the banks. I'm budgeting, sir. So I'm asking you, I'm just challenging you as a man. You're a brand-new councillor. This will do you some good, actually, I think. Just think about this subject and suggest that we retrieve the raise that these councillors gave themselves, that they certainly haven't earned. They haven't shown any leadership, they didn't show leadership in this. Pass this off to the province. My neighborhood's gonna, I'm not living there, I'm living in the country, I already told you, I'm relieving myself of the problems, but that neighborhood's going to thump till 3:00 in the morning now with the sound of a bass while they feed alcohol to my brothers and sisters in an absorbing amount for no good reason. You guys just, you had a choice. You had, you know, the public wasn't here because you used the mail. I would have been here. But you passed off, these people passed off their obligation. They're supposed to be leaders. You got, if you're leaders, lead. Lead the way. You want to budget? Lead the way, man. I got a grandson, I'm leading the way. Everything I do from here on, I'm going to make sacrifices to make sure he doesn't suffer the consequences of your poor decisions. I'm taking him out of Port Alberni as fast as I can. I'm guaranteeing you I'm doing that. I'm putting every, my heart and soul into that. I got some help. I'm trying to sell my property here, and when I can kiss Port Alberni goodbye, I'm gonna. And it's a sad day, I love Port Alberni. It's a beautiful town to grow up, and I grew up here. And you can't pass off your decisions, I can't budget because the last council didn't before me. You chose a leadership position, all of you, including the ones that are not here tonight. It's time to start leading. If you're going to win the next election, you better start leading something. These people behind me are pissed, and they got good right to be. And what you guys are going to take away from, at my time up?
Your time's almost up, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to, regretfully, I'm just going to walk out. Not any offense to anybody, I'm upset, I'm going to take a walk, I walk off my anger. Take me up on that, sir. Mr. Verboogie? Think about it. Thank you.
Councillor Petola.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ambrose, before, Mr. Ambrose? I just want to thank you for your comments, Mr. Ambrose, and I know, I hear you saying you are well in control of your emotions and realize that you wish to walk this off. Just one question I had, which was, we have dealt with two liquor license applications recently, and you referred to one for 3:00 a.m. So I just wanted to make sure that I understand you're referring to the same one I think you're referring to, which was the FX nightclub, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And, and I just wanted to clarify that I understand council voted against recommending that that be extended to 3:00.
I'm sorry?
Council voted against recommending that to be going to 3:00 a.m. So we, so we did not, to the extent that council has any power in the situation, which is very limited, we did deny that. So, if... We didn't? We referred it to Liquor Control Board.
Corporate officer.
Thank you, Chair Dame. Just to clarify, what we did is we opted out, so we don't get to deny liquor license applications or approve them. We are able to provide comment, and by "we" I mean council. So by opting out, council chose not to comment, and so the liquor board will be taking on notification of residents and offering the public engagement themselves. So it doesn't mean that council denied or approved it.
Okay. So I'm corrected. The only reason I brought that up is that I clearly hear that you have concerns for yourself, but even more so for your grandson.
I'm leaving. I have no concerns for myself. Council chose to just bow down to the province. That's not why we elected you people. I was correct the first time. I got my information correct off the street. And thank you, sir, for your interest. Council bowed down. Don't bow down to the province. It's your job. We elected you as leaders, man, leaders! And leaders need to show the way, not bow down when a decision comes. And this here barrier is embarrassing, and it's cowardly. So is the exit door. If you've got to run from me, don't let me in the damn door.
Thanks, Keith.
Sir, I will answer your question. You were a millwright, I was a logger. And as a logger, I made about five days' pay here, and I'm very underpaid here, not overpaid.
We'll go to the next speaker. Is there anyone else who would like to make, offer some input? No?
Yeah.
Oh, did I miss a hand? Who's, oh, go ahead, Joseph, yeah.
Hi, my name's Joseph. I live here in Port Alberni. And there's a lot of people that could speak better into this, but we're looking forward to your, your discussion and comments tonight on, on one of the topics tonight, which is the Industrial Heritage Facility, the building. But just a couple of things, as I was reading through some of the things that are in tonight's agenda, just to bring to your attention, because you're going to be discussing it, and I'm sure you've all seen this, but one of the first things you're being asked, it states some of the history of the Industrial Heritage Center. One of the things it says that was initially, when it went into the, in the building, was 2018, and it mentions in there that a lease agreement with the IHS at the Industrial Heritage Center for a period of 15 years, expiring October 14th, 2033. That's just, so that's an agreement that's already in place, you're already aware of that. And the next thing is that now you're looking at or being asked to consider that a written notice be given out to terminate that lease in June 30th of 2029. So you're actually breaking a lease that's already in place and, and then shortening it to 2029, which is already in place by the looks of it until 2033. So that's just an observation. So in, also in the agenda, it mentions that the community holds a recommending not to renew the lease with the Port Alberni Curling Club, which expires, oh, that's the Curling Club, okay, so I've got that one wrong, I thought it was to do with IHS also. But that mentions not to renew that one also on that date of June 30th, 2029. So the whole building is, I'm looking at that. So that's just something I'm sure you're aware of, that that lease that is already in place would be broken by doing that. Let's see, looking for, make sure I've got that all in place. And looking at... Sorry, just a sec here. I'm looking for to a, I'm looking at some of the costs associated with the Industrial Heritage. I'm sure they're not all here, but on, I don't know what page that's on, but it mentions from year 2010 to 2024, some of the costs that have been, occurred over that period of time, which is 14 years. And over that period of time, I've totaled up, and it's $138,000 for 14-year period. Now, there's probably other things that aren't listed on there. But over a 14-year period, what would that amount to? $138,000 divided with the 14 years, what would that be per year? About $10,000. Seems like a pretty good cost for what you're getting for that, $10,000. The next one is, you're looking at projected costs and some of the things that might take place, might or might not need. And on that, so it mentions a number thing, but on that, I'm also curious on that. I've noticed in other communities where the grants are, because there's quite a large cost if, if some of those things are indeed needed. One of them is in 2030, which is a roof replacement on the curling club. And in that, I know there's grants available, so would that be something where some of that funding or need for that could be looked after by a grant? I see that's been done in other communities. Lastly, on another point in here, just so, as you're going over this... One sec. "Implications of completing the maintenance projects at the Industrial Heritage Society Center, as outlined in the facility conditions assessment, could include an increase of 1% or more per year." That's for the budget year 2025 to 2029. So it could amount to a 1% increase over that period of time per year. And I'm just wondering, your, the financial implication of demolishing the structure, it already says, they don't know what that is. So on, again, in the agenda, your financial plan, the financial implication of demolishing the structure unless it, or selling the land, structures and land are unknown at this point by staff, that has to be explored further. So that would be a huge cost to demolish, of course, and I'm just wondering, would that also increase by 1% per, I don't know what period of time exactly, it might be first, second year, third year, but whatever. So there's going to be a large cost in that. So that, no matter the way around it, there's going to be a cost involved. A 1% seems like not a huge thing if you're going to do all of those things. That's if, in fact, they need them, or if there's grant funds, fund money available for that. And I've got one last note, if I can find it. The last comment is, let me find my last page. So if that were all to be done, demolish the land vacant for, ready for building, as I think it states in there, that the land could be then ready for something else to go in there. If indeed you were to tear all of that down and then have to rebuild a curling rink, being one of the main ones at the community, I mean, we use the facility as well-used overall, but if you were to tear that down and have to rebuild a new curling rink, what would the cost? There's four sheets, I believe, on our curling rink?
Six.
Six? Wow, wow, sorry. I don't get in there often enough. So there's six sheets. So if you were to rebuild that and have to then build a new facility, what would the cost be on that? And I'm sure it would amount to a lot more than a 1% increase over that period of time. So just something to think, there's things looking at, yes, it's an older building, yes, it needs maintenance, we all know that. But the practicality of saying, "We can keep it going", I think it was built in, in the '60s, good, strong building overall, everything needs repairs. I think that, looking at our multiplex, which is much newer, our cost of maintenance for that per year, if anybody knows what that is. I think when I read in the report last time, it was just over a million dollars a year for maintenance costs on the multiplex, much newer. Anyhow, just looking at that, saying, it doesn't really make sense to look at that. So just something to consider as you're looking through that agenda for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Oh, go ahead, Councillor Petola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is a public input period, and we often hear a number of people coming forward, yourself being one, Mr., sorry, Joseph, I know you by Joseph all the time, but I know I've been introduced to you by your last name. My apologies. And we have observations presented to us, but often we have speculation presented to us. And I feel that it's time that we efficiently use the public input period to not have speculation that engenders further speculation in the community. So, specifically, and I don't need answers from this, but I'm going to draw attention to a few points that Joseph made. The first being that he knows there are grants available. And now he's waving his hand to say he doesn't know there are grants available. And that is probably more correct to say he suspects from other communities that there might be grants available, but has no knowledge whatsoever as to what grants are available and whether or not they are particular to this type of a facility. Joseph also stated there are huge costs to demolish this, after reading specifically in the report that we have no idea how much it costs to demolish it. And I don't think that Joseph is an expert in demolitions. So, again, and I'm not attempting to draw any attention to Joseph. He unfortunately just happened to be the person that made his observations that were a little bit more speculation than observation. So, I commend you on coming forward and raising these issues, and I value the discourse that we can have in this theater here. I really hope that we can move to a place where that discourse is not speculation, maybe opinion, because we all have them. Even better, where we are agreed on a certain set of facts and can prevent, present solutions for moving forward. So, again, I hope that that has not offended you, Joseph. I expect that I will be hearing from you again very soon, and I am looking forward to the value of that discourse in benefiting this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Petola. Mr. Anderson.
I'm just wondering, is this public input period or question period? We've gone through this before, where someone, a public input, can get up and speak about anything pertaining to city council business. They can't ask questions. Gone through this with Mayor Minions. And you, there is no discussion from city council, and all I've heard is the opposite. First, we're doing it this way, next, we're doing it another way. It's public input period, not an opportunity for debate from the public. And I'd like you to verify which, which way is the right way. I know what happened at the beginning, John Douglas brought it forward when he was mayor. These, these people that have spoken, there may be things that's right and things that you don't agree with, but it's not here for discussion. Let them have their say and go on, and go onward. Why do I have to keep bringing this up?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Yeah, as this is public input period, if you would like to bring this as a question at the end, during question period, we can answer that question. But, yeah.
Well, I understand that I'm talking about the previous speakers and input, it's coming back to them from city council. That's not what the rules are.
No, the rules are that it is up to the chair to decide if they want to accommodate comments from council, and so in this case, I did.
I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to say this, but that is not correct.
Mr. Anderson, it is correct. Please don't interrupt me. Are there any other comments? Okay, last call? No? All right, seeing, seeing... Yeah, come on up.
I just wanted to speak on behalf of...
Yeah, just, just give your name and your place of residence, please.
My name is Kennedy Sernick. I've lived in Port Alberni for 10 years now. I moved to town to help my family run our business, a steampunk cafe, which has since sold to another family. But we had a lot of the IHS members come around and be regulars of ours, and they were wonderful, wonderful people, as they're, they're regular community members. What strikes me so vividly as appalling, especially with the conversations today, is that you are aware, the city is aware of their resident, their tenancy agreement with the society, and they are suggesting breaking it, and that's, they're, they're right. But their lack of communication, which has been very apparent today and previous in the past with other societies, that you are coming at it with, like they said, like it's, it's not an asset, and like, it's, it's on the chopping block. And I think when it comes to their protections of rental agreements, the city has put themselves on a lower pedestal by lacking in communication. They have a right to that, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kennedy. I think we have time for one further speaker, and then, and then we will be moving on, on the agenda. Yes, gentlemen, who just had your hand up, is that, would you like to approach? Just state your name and place of residence.
Larry Bonner, longtime curler. You have not, we haven't heard anything about this at the curling rink. We just invested $200,000 in curling equipment. If we'd known that you were going to do this, we wouldn't have invested that money in the building. And I'm just wondering, where's the transparency here to be talking to the people that are using your buildings? That's all I want to say. You haven't commented with us or any information?
Thank you, Larry. All right, and just to remind everyone, there will be a question period at the end, so if anybody has anything that they want to directly ask us, we can still have those conversations at the end. This was input period. Councillor Petola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, not to pick on anybody again, but I seem to notice that there was an individual in the front row that was unsure of the process and may want to speak, and if, in fact, the lady that is sitting in the front row with the white jacket on wishes to speak, I would make a motion that we have one more speaker.
Is there, I'm not sure that we need a motion, but we have, if it, council's in agreement, we'll, yeah, yeah, everybody's in agreement, okay. We'll go ahead and allow that. Sure, you can approach.
I'm Pac Hermine. I've lived here for...
I'm Pac Hermine. I've lived here 14 years. I've lived, I live currently in the New Timberline, which is a great development in the city. I think it's a great contribution. But I, I'm shocked to see that there's even any thought of destroying that building. One, because of the curling, but secondly, the seniors who have given so much to repair all that equipment and have it such a good display, we could use a tourist person here who plans tourism, plans and markets tourism in Port Alberni. We don't seem to let, we have a lot of people who go through here, but we don't stop them to say, have you seen? And all the things that are available in this community. We could make money by being at least a little more organized in how the traffic that goes through here can stop and be entertained and be at home in this community. I think it's a big mistake to get rid of the center. I'm not sure what the costs are, but it, between the curling and the, and the equipment that's there, I think it's a huge mistake. That's all I want to say.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we, we have actually already gone through all of our speakers. I think, I think we, we've got quite a full agenda today, so we have to move on, but there will be question period at the end, if, if you'd like to come up during that time. Okay, so moving on to delegations, we have the HFN Group of Businesses, if you'd like to come
We've got a big group here. Hi, my name's Patrick Schmidt. I'm the CEO of the Huayt Group of Businesses, and with me is Brandy Louder, the Chief of the Hoopacchasa, and Evan Cook, who's a councillor for the Huayt First Nation, and Teresa Ganyan, who's a CFO, who works alongside me. We're here tonight to seek a letter of support. That's it. We've been planning a project for a number of years now to try to bring some tourism infrastructure to Port Alberni and to make a, a business. So over the last years, we've collected the three First Nations as a group and have determined to build a microtel up, up near the Walmart site. I gotta do it here.
Oh, there we go.
So the, the project will be a partnership with the Huayt, the Seychouc, and the Hoopacchasa. We're looking at 76 rooms. It'll be four stories tall, it's about 40,000 square feet, have a pool, a hot tub, and a water slide. The water slide was a real important feature. Had a lot of questions about that. We're closing on the land here very quickly. The subdivision has happened, and the closing date for the land is the 29th of January. There'll be a notice has been sent out to the neighbors as of this, this month, and the city staff, you guys will be presented it, I guess, in this month as well. We're targeting to have the development permit and building permit done in February. So a project like this is, it's quite expensive, so we've been trying to find ways to support the capital on it. And there's a grant through Indigenous Affairs. It's called the Corp Grant, the Community Opportunity Readiness Program, and fairly complexed process to apply for it. But one of the things it requires is a, is a letter of support from council. So we've, yeah, we've provided the draft of the letter, and the, the project itself, we see it's aligned with your strategic plan, and it's going to create lots of additional tourism opportunities and supports the regional development. So at this stage, we're looking for your support on the letter.
Counselor Mealy.
Thank you very much for coming. Really appreciate it. It's big news, kind of a no-brainer in my, my, I'd love to make a motion that we recommend to council, we write a letter of support, or sorry, sign the draft letter of support.
Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Solda. Are there any comments or questions? Yes, Counselor Solda.
I think it's a great opportunity for our community, and I thank you very much, Kukul. And the best kept secret, the location, would you be able to tell us the best kept secret in Port Alberni?
I think it's in the, it's in the materials that have been submitted. Yeah, so it's near Walmart.
It's, it's near Walmart. There's the best kept secret. And, and the only reason I wanted you to say it out to the public, because not everybody has that kind of, the materials, and everybody knows. So thank you very much, Kukul.
Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the delegation. Your request is for a letter of support. I've read your draft letter, and I'm looking at the last paragraph specifically, where it says, "We have full confidence in the capacity and abilities of the partnering nations." I would agree with that. Beyond that, I'm wondering if you need us to adopt your wording, or whether you just wish a letter of support from council in our own wording.
There, there's elements of the letter that are very specific to what the corp organization is requiring, so I'd be happy to work with, with maybe a staff member from the city to kind of fine tune a combination of what the city's words would, you know, what you'd like your words to be, and what we require for the grant for best chance of success, if that works.
Just so council is aware of that, I would support that. I wouldn't support blind adoption of your wording. Not that there's anything wrong with your wording, because I think it probably accurately represents your wishes, but if they are our wishes, we should make sure that they are completely aligned.
Okay, and do we need to make any changes to the motion to verbatim that, or I think we can, we can just move forward? Is that...
As the, as a mover, Mr. Chair, I would consider that very friendly.
All right, friendly amendment it is then. Okay, so are there any other comments? All right, everybody understanding the motion? All in favor? People in camera, in favor, none opposed, motion carried. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for, for coming. Moving on to unfinished business. Oh, I skipped ahead. No, I didn't. Okay, unfinished business, the five-year financial plan, Q and A summary, corporate, corporate service.
Thank you, Chair Dame. So this is just our ongoing document for any questions council or the public may have for our financial plan process, and so there have been no new updates since we received it yesterday. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does council have any questions or comments on that? None? Okay. Moving on to Echo Aquatic Center maintenance. We have a report dated December 23rd from the December, from the Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture regarding maintenance of the Echo 67 Aquatic Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the November 25th regular meeting, council postponed consideration of maintenance and upgrade projects at the Echo Aquatic Center in the five-year financial plan until this meeting to enable staff to bring additional information. So council indicated that their intent at the time was to only consider completing essential maintenance until either a catastrophic failure occurs at the aquatic center, or a definitive decision is made by the regional district regarding a new aquatic center. So the list of essential projects and corresponding rationale for each are listed on page 17 of your agenda, and should council complete only these essential projects, it would result in a cost savings of more than $1.4 million over the next five years. Council is reminded that any projects you choose to defer will certainly, certainly result in an increased cost in the future, and often a change in scope, which would also come with an additional expense.
Great, thank you. Could we bring up page 17 on the screen, please? Thank you. Counsel, any, any questions or comments? Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Chair Dame. I would just like to say thank you very much for the work and for listening to council and responding appropriately. I, I think we're starting to be able to communicate better and be on the same page. I, I think this is really valuable work. Usually, I would say, we shouldn't be deferring expenses off into the future because of the increased costs, but given the particular nature of the aquatic center, I think, my opinion would be completing the recommended projects as stated and deferring the rest and accommodating that savings of 1.7 million would be the wisest course of action at this point in time.
Thank you, Counselor Petola. Counselor Mealy? Yeah, go ahead.
I was just about to say the same, pretty much the same thing. Thank you very much for all your hard work. Really appreciate it. I would make the motion, if that's possible, that the committee, the whole, recommend council, direct administration to update the 2025, 2035 year financial plan to reflect the list of maintenance projects at the aquatic center as provided in the staff report and dated December 23rd, 2024.
We've moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Petola. Oh, Counselor, Counselor Haggard.
Thank you. I just want to let the board know that a few weeks ago, the board of the regional district and city council members did a tour of the aquatic center. So I think the next step with the regional district is to have a comprehensive review done by a consultant to find out the exact cost of upgrading the aquatic facility versus building new. So I think this is a good move, let's do what has to be done immediately in order to keep the pool operating, and let the regional district board look at costing out how much upgrades would be, and those upgrades would include those more expensive items, and then we can look at how much the total cost is going to be, what has to be done. In that way, the whole Alberni Valley will be able to help pay for that, those upgrades. Thank you.
Director Thorpe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a note that there is an error on the recommendation. So I've indicated there the 2025 to 2030 financial plan, of course, it would be 2025 to 2029. So I was looking to sneak in additional sixth, sixth year in the financial plan, and of course, it only goes to 2029.
Thank you. Appreciate, and noted. Okay, we, I'm sure we can make that adjustment to the motion. All right, are there any other comments? No. Yeah, I, I think before we vote, I, I would just like to ask, so the items that are remaining on the 2025 plan, those, those are, I assume, things that are, are going to, are expected to imminently fail, or at least could and, and would halt operations of the pool? That's, that's correct?
To the Chair, that is correct. In regards to the UV filtration systems, those are health and safety components that kill off parasites and keep combined chloramines down, and the main pool circulating pump is kind of like the heart of the whole system. That is our backup pump, so we do have a functioning primary pump, but the backup pump is corroded and leaking and is not fit for duty, so the pump we're requesting would be to have a good backup pump, because they're so specialized in nature, the lead time to source a new one would be months.
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate this. I think that this, this does sort of meet the spirit of the, of the, of what we're trying to do. I do question if maybe there's one or two of those things that still could be moved ahead even one year, just to buy some time in order to see if we make any progress with a regional pool plan, but yeah, I don't know. I mean, I think, I think I'm comfortable moving forward with it. It's, it's hard, right, because we're, I'm not a pool expert, and I, I would like to see the pool operation continue, but at the same time, it is really challenging to spend money knowing that it's not necessarily going to be a, a long-term investment. And hearing that the pump is a backup pump for $20,000 does sort of make me pause and consider for a moment if that's something that could be put off. Any other comments before I call the question? Go ahead, Counselor Solda.
Just a quick question. So if we didn't replace, have a backup plan that we have on the books right now, what would happen? That we would have to close the pool? Where, and how long would we have to do that? Just, just to get a perspective of what if?
Thank you for the question. Yes, it is a backup pump. It would depend on the nature of the failure, which determine the possible fix. So of course, there's a pump and a motor component to the pump. I don't have a crystal ball to know how or when it would fail, but I do know when they have failed, they can fail quite dramatically, and the timeframe to source the parts is not short, because they are specific pumps to our specific pool that are based on pump curves and pressures and flow rates, so it's not even just going to get one. It has to be designed for our pool, so we, it's like anything, the main primary pump is healthy, it gets inspected annually, third party, but should it go down, we do not have a viable backup right now.
So just to, just if I follow up, so that could mean the pool could be shut two or three months, or, depends when we would get the part if we didn't have a backup. Is that correct?
We would make every effort to get it up and running the best we could, but it would, again, depend on the nature of the failure. We do have service folks that we send our pumps to. I'm sure we would be getting them involved, our city works yard, all hands on deck, but at the end of the day, if the pulp was, if the pump wasn't salvageable, it would be, in my experience, a minimum of 10 weeks to source a new pump.
Thank you very much. And I know you do amazing magic in that little workroom. You took us for a tour, so I just wanted to say thank you on that.
Mayor Minions.
Thank you. Just wanted to recognize the work that our staff have done to really keep this pool in an incredible shape for the age that it is. And additionally, I, I think that this is a, these are hard decisions, because ultimately, we recognize that deferring the maintenance on the pool could lead to a failure, and I think that that's a, a risk that council has to decide if they're comfortable with, you know, via this motion and the preceding motion that will come to council. While I think we absolutely don't ever want to see a, a failure of the pool, I think with a 17% budget increase being considered, we really need to be looking for projects that can be put off. And I'm optimistic that by midway through this year, in collaboration with the regional district, we'll have a better picture of whether we are moving forward with a new aquatic facility or not, or at least, you know, if we are or are not in the next few years at that point, and as we proceed to the next budget year, I, I think we can reevaluate this if needed, but for the time being, I'm, I'm definitely comfortable with the motion as it's been put forward, and the work that staff has done, both to, to maintain the pool to this point, and then also to really assess out the options for what we should continue to do now and what we can put off. But I think it's just important for council to know, recognize, and, and accept that we are taking a risk by deferring some of this work, and, because we just, as staff has said, we just don't know if the pool, if, if these items will last or not. So it's a balancing act, just like everything else tonight, but I think all based around that tax increase that we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we call the question? All right, all in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Okay, on to the, the history of the Industrial Heritage Center, a report from the Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture. Director Thorpe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the November 25th regular meeting, council directed staff to prepare a report outlining the history of the building at 3259th Avenue, along with options for minimizing fiscal investment in the building. As council's direction was for staff to provide cost-saving options, staff explored a variety of scenarios, some quite severe, in order to give council fulsome data that you requested. Since the instruction from council to date was fact-finding, staff have not completed community engagement initiatives until council provides further information to staff with what you're looking to achieve with this project. In 2003, council considered disposition of this building. Fast forward 21 years, the facility condition assessment outlined a list of recommended projects in the next six years, which total over $2 million. Six options for the committee to consider are outlined on page 21 of the agenda package.
Thank you, Director Thorpe. And I think I just want to start off by speaking to this a little bit. I, I think that there, I, I spent some time speaking with lots of members of the community today. of the community today, and I know that's why most of you are here. And I just want to be clear that this is not, we're not making a decision tonight. This is the very beginning of a process of making some decisions that will lead to community engagement, that will lead to a process to make this really difficult decision. We're, we're asking for information. We're asking for how is this going to look? I shouldn't say we are, we are potentially, if these motions pass. And despite the fact that I keep referencing council tonight, this is a committee. This is not a council. And so this is about us essentially starting this conversation about what the future of the IHC could be. And so with that, Counselor Mealy.
Love to start off. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. And apologies to Counselor Haggard. I'm sitting in your seat tonight, so I just wanted to say that off the bat. I've stolen your pen. It's okay. So just to start, I am the council's representative on the Industrial Heritage Society and the Heritage Committee as well. And I think what we have here is exactly what you just said, Counselor, or Chair Dame, is the beginning of a process, and that we need to just take a deep breath and realize that we're at the start of what we need to do as a council and as a community on what's the best path for that building. Okay? And what council has done through a resolution is asked staff to come back with some options. Now, what that means is we start this conversation, and we have other ideas come forward, such as, at the last Industrial Heritage Society meeting, and I apologize, I don't want to take the thunder away from, from Mr. Spencer, Mr. Corbille, but there was a working group of IHC members that are going to form and want to work with the city on other options. And that is a big part of this, is there are other people here today and others without, outside of the, outside of this room as well, who have ideas what they, what they can do, what we can do with this building. So I just want to say that off the bat is, is staff has come forward with the answer to our question. The staff is unbiased. They say these are the options. But there are other options in the community as well. And I think we're going to hear that if we, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe the Industrial Heritage Society would like to, to have a little time to talk about that. And again, I don't want to take away from, from the, from, steal their thunder from the last meeting. But we do have a dedicated group of individuals here and up at the IHC that is willing to try something, anything, look at all the options as well, and just realize that the date that staff has put down is 2029. So it is 2025. So we have four years. If, if all goes wrong, even in a way you say that, then, then that's where we'll come to that deadline. But until then, we have time to see what is the best use and how we can fix the roof and make that the best facility possible, if possible. And it's interesting, and I apologize, Mr. Hugh Grist is up front here today. And Mr. Grist was at the meeting many years ago, 21 years ago. We were both, we were both a little younger back then. And, and I asked Mr. Grist if, if taking over the Western Industrial Heritage Society would take over the building, if that would be a cost to the city, and, or if they would run it properly. And he said yes, and that was it. I changed my vote, and the building stayed since then. And it's been a wonderful asset to hold our assets. But I believe there's other options out there. And again, this is just the beginning. Let's explore those options together with the Curling Club, with the Sunshine Club, with the IHS, and let's see what can be done in the overall picture. So, and I do, again, I'd like to say that the IHS is here, and I, I would love to hear from them at some, some part of this meeting.
Thank you. Oh, Counselor Haggard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if you look at the report, there's more than $2 million in maintenance and upgrades that are needed for this building over the next five years. So the message that council keeps getting from the public is that their tax is too high, and it is a very difficult tax year. So we're looking to cut wherever we can. So to put $2 million in perspective, that is a tax increase of between 8 and 9%. Are the taxpayers willing to pay that kind of increase to keep a 62-year-old building open? There were some great suggestions on a Facebook page today, which I thought were fantastic. And I really liked the interaction of the public and the ideas that they were giving. But that $2 million of grades will still need to be done. They said we would also have to incur ongoing operating cost and also staff time, which would be additional taxation dollars. My preference would be to see this, my kind of money, go towards building a new curling rink. And my preference for location, I've said this before, would be near the multiplex. That just makes a lot of sense to me. And also want to add that the IHS is a very valuable asset to the community, and I really appreciate all the work that they do that there. One idea that I had was there used to be a warehouse that was owned by my, owned by Mosaic, located near the McLean Mill site. And IHS used to keep their excess inventory in there. So at one point, we had them take everything out because we weren't, I don't remember exactly the details if we leased it or they were just using it, I'm not sure. But I wondered if maybe we could get staff to look and see if that warehouse is still available, what kind of condition that that warehouse is in, and would Mosaic be willing, if they're not used anymore, to donate, donate that warehouse to IHS? I think there could be some great synergies between IHS and the McLean Mill. I think that would just be a really good fit in order to showcase the assets of the city and the IHS at McLean Mill. So just thinking of ideas, and I don't know if IHS would be open to that, or if Mosaic would be open to it. But at this time, we have to look and, and really think about any idea that comes up. And also, I would like to ask staff, is a new curling rink going to be included in our Parks master plan? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haggard. Is everything okay back there? Yeah, we're okay to carry on? Okay, okay. Director Thorpe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two comments there. The, so it's undetermined at this point if a new curling club is part of the Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan, because we're still in that process. So we're just beginning phase two of a three-phase process, so more to come on that. Also wanted to give the committee some context as well, that not including insurance, the current cost recovery model of our industrial collection is 3%. So we have revenues of generally $3,000 per year and expenses of over $117,000. So just to give folks context of what sort of cost recovery we're looking at at the site, at this point, it's 3%.
Thank you, Director Thorpe. That is, that is good information. Is there anybody else who has any comments to make? Counselor Solder.
Just to say I agree with Counselor Mealy and Counselor Haggard. And it's interesting because in 2003, Counselor Haggard and myself, Counselor Haggard, well, Counselor Mealy and myself was here. We were sitting here, we were having the same discussion about closing this facility. And of course, probably the same, some of the same people were in this room fighting for what they believe should stay, or hey, we can take it over instead of demolishing it. And here we are today, we're doing the same thing. And, which is a great thing, coming in and, and, you know, I'm, I think you should voice your opinion, and you should say, hey, we want to save it. And again, we're just at the baby stage. We did ask staff to bring a report, like we did last time, too. And now, as council members, we need to go and digest this and take a look. And we still need your comments and your feed, comments as we go along. So we're just at an early stage. I look at it when staff comes back and says, hey, we're going to have to replace the roof. Well, we know what a roof it costs. And the roof on this was, I believe, what was it, $2 million or something for the roof? What was the roof? I can't remember. Do we have a cost? One point, some?
Well, it's $474,000 just for the arena.
Yeah, $474,000 per the arena.
Well.
Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not saying anything. Yeah, we're not, we're not going that far. But, but we still have to look at the future, too. I mean, just like ourselves in our, our home, you know, we have to look at, we have to make sure. We know we have to replace our roof on our home. So do we have the money to do that? And where do we get the money? And how much, what do I cut back to have that happen? So I think we're not, we still have to do some talking. And please, please send your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Solder. Counselor Mealy?
I was just going to say, when we talked about this years ago, $83,000, roughly $83,000 was the cost allocated for demolition. When we changed our mind as a council, we used that towards patching the roof. And we use that money, so, well, a whole new, exactly. I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Chris. That's right. So what I was going to say was, I was going to allow, just ask if the IHS would have a comment after council or after committee members have, have a say, because I believe that they have some input that would just shed some light. And the more information, the better.
Would, would council be, yeah? Oh, Counselor Petola, we'll go to you first.
I have many comments with regards to spending my neighbor's money and reaching into someone else's pocket to pay for particular concerns of a particular group of people that are interested in preserving heritage machinery. That doesn't mean it's a bad thing, but it does mean that I'm not comfortable sticking my hand in somebody else's pocket. So I think that these concerns need to be adequately discussed with all the possible outcomes being reviewed. And one of those I see at number five, which may not be realistic whatsoever, but is the Committee of the Whole recommends administration explore the sale of the structures, offering right of first refusal to the Western Vancouver Island Industrial Heritage Society, the Albany Valley Curling Club, and the Echo Sunshine Club. That is of particular interest to me for a discussion, maybe not as the final outcome, but for a discussion. Because, as I understand, reading through the history books, the, and I may not have this word-for-word factual, Counselor Mealy and Mr. Grist, I'm sure later on, not during this meeting, speaking out, will correct me. But the idea was, the city delayed the demolition, deferred the demolition, because these other clubs were going to take it over. And now the city is stuck with a bill, potentially, for new roofs and other physical structure. So I'm having difficulty understanding if the deal was in fact that the Industrial Heritage Society was going to take over the building, why the building is in such bad repair, and we need to pay money for it. So I don't need comments from the audience at this point in time, because we are entering into a discussion that, as Counselor Mealy and Counselor Dame pointed out, is designed to take time, allow for consideration, and involve all the parties. But I do have to say that as the parties come forward with their recommendations, this is my starting place as one member of council, which is, if in fact, this is something that the clubs want, and the clubs, for the best outcome, probably could have, what are the clubs going to do as opposed to me and my neighbor and our tax dollars? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Petola. Counselor Solder?
I beg to differ a little bit with you, Counselor Petola, in the fact that I know the Heritage Society and the societies that are involved have put a lot of time and energy in keeping the building as best as they can. And as an aging building gets older, it's a little harder to keep the maintenance. And of course, I think that's really important to take note. Yes, it needs a lot, some more TLC, and they've done the best that they can inside and outside with what they have. And you can only do it with so much money and have so much money involved in that without some help. And I have no problem thinking about if they're interested, whatever, whoever the society is, is interested in purchasing the building, make an offer to the city or talk to the city about it, however you want to do it. I, but I just want to recognize what you have done inside and what you have done to maintain that. And that's really important to give yourself a pat on the back on that. Okay, so I just want, and what you have done for the collection for the city on top of that. So I do want to recognize that. I believe in heritage. I believe in, and I've always said that throughout the elections and stuff like that, that we can't forget the past, but we also have to move forward, too, in some capacity, but not forget. And however that picture looks, that is where we're at right now. So I just want you to know that. Okay? That's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Solder. Any other comments? So, oh, Counselor Mealy, go ahead.
No, sorry. I apologize, Mr. Chair. Just, we're just hoping that the committee would allow a little bit of time for a representative of the actual, the actual tenants of the building to, to just come forward, especially the IHC, as I believe they have some either information or options, or at least part of the discussion.
Sure, yeah. Would council be, the committee, pardon me, be agreeable to that?
Yes.
Yeah? Yeah. Okay, sure. So is there a representative from the IHS who would like to, all right, come on up?
Yeah, Ron Corbille, 2406 Sixth Avenue. And I'm the president of the Western Vancouver Island Industrial Heritage Society. You're right, Charles, some of the thunder's been stolen. But I just want to point out, the recommendations that are presented to the Committee of the Whole, that could very well just pass this over to council, are, starts with to explore the process timeline and related costs of demolishing the structures. And let's get this straight. This isn't just the Industrial Heritage Center. It's also the Curling Club. It's also the Sunshine Club, probably with a combined membership of in excess of 300, I would think. And of course, the Sunshine Club alone has 700. But of the people that use the carpentry shop and the billiards, I would think between the three of us, there's in excess of 300 people. The building is, was built in 1963. My, my house is one year older, and I'm not about to demolish it, believe me. The building is, just our building alone, the Industrial Heritage Center, is assessed at $627,000. Now, I'm no expert in what it costs to demolish buildings, but in my time on council, we looked at the possible demolition. It was $600,000. I'm sure you people are probably getting to be somewhat experts, dealing with the local pub on Argyle Street and the demolition of that. So it's not a cheap venture, I would think. And there's a lot of value in that. The Curling Club, I believe, is assessed slightly less than the IHC, but in total, it's probably $1 million and a half, including, including the lands. Just the way this has happened is not very kosher. You know, we had members today, as a matter of fact, working on projects and kind of wondering, why are we bothering? Like, they heard it through the radio or through an email. Now, you know, out of curiosity, I just Googled this. What, what are the steps when a city council develops a strategic plan? The very first step, conduct a thorough diagnostic review. I think that's happening. Consult with the stakeholders and review the existing services and operational plans. I think there was something missed there. Consult with the stakeholders. You know, as one of the curlers said, they put $200,000 into an ice machine just two years ago. If we know what's going on in the future, I'm sure they wouldn't have spent those, those dollars. So, you know, what I would hope is the council would direct staff to come back to the three groups, being the IHC, the Curling Club, and the Sunshine Club. And let's look at ways of developing some of the, the, the things that could help make this better. We, we sat down with the Curling Club. We talked to them about these issues. Both of us believe our roofs aren't in, you know, they're old, but they're not leaking, they're not falling apart. they're not falling apart, they don't have to be replaced tomorrow. It, it kind of bothers me when people say, how did this get in this shape? The people take darn good care of these facilities. And, you know, unless you go in there and, and look around and talk to people, you shouldn't be shooting your mouth off about the shape that these buildings are in, because the, the guys work really hard to keep those things up. So again, I would, I would hope that you go back, you, you recommend that this goes to council and staff comes to the stakeholder groups, and let's have a frank discussion. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to paint a wall? Like, are we talking Van Gogh here? Like, people can do these things. We've got volunteers, we, we know people, we can borrow equipment. We could do this a heck of a lot cheaper than that document says. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Councilor Mealy, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair, Chair Dame, and thank you to the Speaker, former Councilor Ron Corbille. So again, it's, not to, not to debate anything that you've said, sir, but, but again, this is a starting point. And this is how we've come to staff to ask them for options. And the public consultation part happens with this. This is where the start is. So I apologize. And again, it is something that was discussed at the IHS meeting in December. So it, it is, to a certain extent, it was out there, but of course, it got a lot more play online and, and on the radio as well. So, but again, this is, this is the starting point. And again, I've, and again, I don't want to steal your thunder, but the IHC group wants to work with the city, and they, that was, that was a resolution at the last IHS meeting, and I really appreciate that. We know the volunteerism in this community. We know how well a lot of people have contacts and can do things cheaper. That is the unique Port Alberta Solutions that we always look for, at least I do. There's always somebody around that can help out, and, and much the reason why the last twenty-one years has been there, the, that the building still stands today, is because of that willingness. So again, and again, I'm not a roof expert, that's for sure. But when we hear from staff and, and, and the idea that, you know, it's coming to its end of its life, then we have to, that's the information. Now, Mr. Griss is here, and he's saying that there is warranty still on the roof. Well, that's something that council needs to hear. If that's, you know, I'd love to hear that kind of information. But this is why we're having it today. This is why we're having the meeting. It's a start of the process. And so, again, it's not a, it's not a, we don't want to shun the users. The, this is the process. We, we started the process, we're gonna have a chat about it, we're gonna, we're gonna go forward and talk about what are the solutions. And again, I commend staff for coming forward with, with the options, because that is what council asked, and what can we do? Again, it's a, it's gonna be a tough budget year, this year, probably next year. And so we need to do our due diligence in an unbiased way to look at every aspect of the budget and go, what can we do? So again, now we're at a point where we go to the public and say, what can we do? Is there, is there another solution out there that council and staff hasn't thought about, and that's where we're at? So I just want to just state again that this is the start of that process, and if there's information that council needs, now is a good time to present it.
Thanks, Councilor Mealy. CAO?
I was just gonna point out that the mayor has your hand up.
Thank you, yes, and I, I did see that. Go ahead, Mayor Minions.
Thank you so much. Councilor Mealy couldn't agree more with your comments. This is the start of the process. And while I do acknowledge that it may not have been perfect in terms of when we reached out, I do want to also say that there's no good way to handle these issues. So I know that the Industrial Heritage Club was made aware, as Councilor Mealy said, in December. We are receiving these issues and trying to figure out how to deal with them as they come to us. And this is not a decision tonight on the future of the Industrial Heritage Club or the Curling Club or the Woodworkshop. This is a starting point, council asking for options and staff bringing back the information that we requested. I could not agree more on some of the costs that have been put in front of us, being, feeling outrageous. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to paint a concrete wall. I had the exact same opinion as you, Ron. So, you know, I, I think that when we receive these costs, like, we have to do something. And from my perspective, the information we've asked for, that council asked for, that the committee is receiving tonight, says, is, is our way of saying, we're not paying these costs. This building was supposed to be demolished, this building was provided to a local club at the, with the expectation that it would not cost the city money. We have not budgeted for it, and we are not paying those costs. We're not paying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to paint a wall, we're not putting on a new roof. We haven't budgeted for it, and therefore, we, it's very challenging to add those things in. Now, that said, I think that demolition of the buildings is one of the many options that is being somewhat considered here. I would love a scenario where, with the recognition that the city has not budgeted for and cannot pay these costs, the club comes together with the city to talk about what needs to be done, what can be done by volunteers, what can be fundraised for, what can be done by local contractors in creative ways. I think there's so much discussion still to be had. And I think there's also a lot of assumptions that are being made tonight. So this is the start of a decision point. From my perspective, it is us as a council saying, there's not money for these initiatives. But I completely appreciate the recognition that they don't necessarily have to be done either. So like, if that wall doesn't need to be painted, great, we don't have money for it. And if it can be fundraised for, even better. If the roof can be patched, if there's a different assessment of it, it can be done. I think these are fantastic steps and would be natural next steps discussions as a result of the report coming forward tonight. So I would really like to, I mean, I, I think we could make the motions, some of the motions that have been made tonight, and have debate and discussion over them. But I think as a, this is, as it's been said, a starting point to the discussion, and certainly not to be seen as notice that we're demolishing the building. So I think we're, we're very, very far from that. And hopefully, this all leads to some creative thinking to happen and, and some different solutions to be come up with. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Minions. Councilor Petola?
Thank you, Chair Dame. I echo the comments of Mayor Minions and Councilor Mealy. The first time I rode a bicycle was the first time. The first time I ate a hot dog was, in fact, the first time. The first time somebody has heard about plans council have or a report produced is, in fact, the first time. So there is, in our discourse of late, amongst all political circles, much speculation, much assumption, and I think much fear. And I would like to stress that whatever the fears are, that's something that I would very much like to discuss, alleviate, so that we can move together on the same footing. And I'm quite refreshed to hear past Councilor Corbille say that he and the people he represents want to be involved in the process. Because that's exactly what this recommendation says. It says, let's have a process. Let's have a process that can take up to four years. Now, when people assume or speculate that a decision has been made for demolition of a building and the sky is falling, that doesn't aid in the discussion. And having said that, the first time that I heard about this was actually November twenty-fifth. And anybody that was at that meeting, public meeting of council, would have heard the same. The process of open and transparent government requires that we follow a process. At that time, council asked for a report. Now we have a report. And council may or may not, there's no motion on the floor yet, may or may not ask administration to start exploring this process. Should administration take it upon themselves to decide to demolish a building without the input or direction from council, that would be, well, I won't say a travesty, but it would be contrary to the openness and transparency that we are trying to adopt here. So I do think it's a misplaced criticism, if, in fact, I did hear a criticism, that this is the first time anybody's heard about it, because this should be the first time anybody's heard about it, because we're following an open and transparent process to include the entire community. So, apart from that, as I said, I echo Councilor Mealy's comments, I echo the mayor's comments. And apart from there being no motion on the floor yet, I am interested to find out how we can achieve the cultural objectives of this community without taxing the families, seniors, low-income, high-income people out of the community, maintain our community, maintain the culture of our community, and do so so that we all enjoy living in Port Alberta, and maybe even Mr. Ambrose might stay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Petola. Oh, Councilor Mealy, yeah?
Sorry, there's just another thing too, and I apologize, as, as it was brought up earlier, Mr. Lescosic, if I get that correct, if I, sorry, thank you, I was very close. And in his comments, and just talking about those options, so talking about grant funding. So if I'm not mistaken, the city isn't, is, it's a lot harder for the city to get grant money for something like that than, say, if a nonprofit went. And I'm just gonna speculate on that if, if I could. Meaning if, if the, the building was taken over by a nonprofit, whoever it would be, that there would be other funding avenues to help with that, that situation. So it's just a little different when it comes to funding, the grant, grant funding we can get from the city and grant funding that we can get, or that the nonprofit can get. It's just two different avenues, so. But I just want to respond to that as your comments during the, the public input period, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Councilor Mealy. So, yeah, I, I think, I, I agree with everything that's been said. And I think that the, I think it was stated earlier, but the reason that there wasn't consultation earlier, and, and as the mayor pointed out, and I do agree, certainly, an invitation could have been sent out, something like that. But this is the starting point, and I don't want to beat a dead horse here. I think that it's important that, as much as we're addressing some community concerns here, we, we also remember that we are engaged in a process here, and, and that we do need to consider what next steps are. So I, I agree that there are some motions here that are probably bang on where we want to go next step, and others, maybe we want to pump the brakes on a bit. Is, is there anyone who wants to make a motion or propose any, anything? We have a motion being written over here. Yeah, I, go, go ahead.
And I just, I won't make a motion just yet. I think, I think what I'm hearing, though, first, if, if I can say this, I don't want to put a recommendation right now or a motion right now, and I, I will write it out, but I think there is a willingness to sit down at least. Sit down with the IHS, sit down with the Sunshine Club, and sit down with the, the Curling Society, and go over options with the tenants. I, I think, I see a lot of heads nodding, okay, so that's, and I think that is part of that step. The, the other side of the coin is the restrictions of the budget season. So meaning that on page twenty-one, ah, is it twenty-one? Yes, it is. On page twenty-one of the report, there are projects that are reviewed for, or, that are part of this year. Meaning, sort of structural review for seventeen thousand dollars, a masonry wall repairs for thirty thousand, concrete wall repainting, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, an energy audit, eighteen thousand. So not to put staff on, in, in a bad spot, but I guess the first question would be, through you, to staff, is are those necessary budget items for this year? Is there, and, and the reason why I say that is, like, the masonry wall repairs, and I haven't seen the masonry wall repairs needed, but if it's not done this year, is that going to be a fail of something else? Do we need an energy audit? Is there a reason why there's an energy audit? Is there savings to be had through a grant or something like that? So that would be my first question to staff, is, are those very necessary? Is there any of those items that could be pushed off to another year, just as a starting point?
If I may, to the chair, so this, the facility condition assessment reports were commissioned by the city to have a third-party consultant of, made up of engineers of various disciplines, to assess the number of our key facilities. And this is the recommendations that they put forward, the items, the suggested going costs, and assign somewhat of a time schedule based on their expertise. But I'd like to caution, they are just recommendations, and we are not beholden to any of them. A lot of the things, like the reviews and the audits, are good in the sense that they're wanting to know, is it worth going to put the million-dollar roof on if it's not the rest of the system? Or it's the same with the pool, the structural audit, no sense tiling the pool deck for a million dollars if it's not, if the concrete under it's rotten, the piping under that's rotten. So these are just recommendations that we're not beholden to. That being said, we did consult with experts to give us some kind of an idea of what we're up against over the coming years with this facility.
Thank you. Councilor Sola?
Well, Councilor Mealy is looking at whatever he's writing for a motion. I will give him some stall time here. Just to touch on those analyst reports, the structural review, I do have concerns on the structural, if there's an issue. So maybe you could just tell me more about the structural review? Do we, is that a necessary thing, you know, like? I mean, the building's been there for a long, long, long time, so I'm just kind of curious to know about the structural review, and then I'll come back with a comment.
Thank you for the question. It was noted during the review process, a number of cracking in horizontal on some of the walls and some shrinkage cracking on the slab on grade. They said at this time, those are not concerns, but they are indicators of possible future concerns, and also infiltration of moisture. There's lots of efflorescence and spalling in some areas. So they really, again, they're just recommending we take a good look at what we have before we decide to invest anymore. But at this point, the report doesn't state any serious concerns with the structure.
Okay, thank you for that. And just as long, my biggest thing is a safety issue right there, because you hear about structural integrity and stuff like that from other things, from buildings and stuff like that. So that would be a concern for me, is the structural review. All these other ones, it can be communicated and talked with the stakeholders that are involved in that, like the painting and, and different things that's, you know, windows and stuff, and volunteers and stuff. So where I'm going with that, Councilor Mealy, as you're drafting up your motion, the only way I'm going to support that is if we start with staff to talk to the stakeholders and, and sit down and talk. And I'm probably reading what you wrote anyways from here, which I can't. And otherwise, the other stuff, decommissioning right now, is not on my, my, my list. And, but I think it's really important to see that we communicate with the stakeholders and, and that can, through staff and that, and see what they can do and what they could see going forward. So, and then come back. That's where I'm at. So I just wanted to tell you when, as you're writing that.
Councilor Petola?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, yes, there is some magic secret motion that, Councilor, no, no, not magic secret, but I, I don't know what wording he has, and I don't want to diminish his work. I'm, I, I would be satisfied with a motion that's along the lines of three A, but that is extended to include or transfer of ownership or negotiating a new lease at market rates. Because I think part of the problem arises from past practices of supporting various interests in the community outside of the market process. And as the city moves towards market leases, that would certainly, I think, be quite possibly a shocking revelation to the users of the facility as it is, to have to pay for it. So I think that what we really need to do is explore all the possible outcomes, whatever they might be, not just limited to the demolition, but including the demolition. And then beyond that, I think that with regards to the budgeting process, because that prior, prior motion obviously has that twenty-twenty-nine long-distance approach. But for today... motion obviously has that 2029 long-distance approach, but for today, and the budgeting process that we're in now, I don't recall what the wording was with regards to the report on the pool, but apparently the wording was great, because it produced this report that we have on the pool, and if we had similar information with regards to this building, we could make similar decisions about what is required in the immediacy, what can be postponed, even though it may cost more in the future, but keeping in mind that if demolition is the outcome, then we won't need to spend those things in the future, and if it's, demolition is not the outcome, perhaps some other parties may be contributing or taking on those expenses in the future.
Councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I appreciate that, and I think the motion that I am going to present, it certainly does leave open to 3A as well as councillor Petola has mentioned. So if it's all possible, and we can have a debate on this as well, I make a motion that we recommend to city council that they work with the existing tenants at 3250 Ninth Avenue to address current 2025 budget items, and find options to address all issues identified in the facility condition assessment.
Any comments?
Just, just the mindset behind this is to, this will allow staff to work with the existing tenants, for them to come forward with their ideas to city staff, and come back to council with the report, but again, this still leaves open to 3A if we do still want staff to look into what is the cost, what is the timeline, and what is the process for a demolition of the building.
Councillor Solder.
Just so you, oh, let me get closer, let me get closer to this mic. I didn't hear 3A in there, I just know you're looking at exploring all options, and that, but it doesn't specifically say that, which, that is why I second this, because it doesn't really specifically say 3A, just so you're aware of that.
And if I may, just really quickly, and that's because I think that's a separation that should happen here, but it doesn't mean that council shouldn't look at that option. It is our job as city councillors to look at all the options, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, whether we personally like it or not, it's our job. It's not a high-paying job, as councillor Pukie has said earlier, but that is our job, our job's to be unbiased, and, and, and look at everything, and, and as I said to some people before, and at the IHS meeting, you know, some of the options right away was demolition, it's private, public-private partnership, it's selling it off, it's giving it to a group, it's, there's so many different options, and then of course the IHS comes forward now and says, you know, we've got some ideas, we want to work, and that's what it's all about. So again, the motion is, the motion that I've written is, is created so that we can have that discussion with the user groups there, but it also doesn't preclude that option of demolition as a final option.
Councillor Haggard.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I agree, I think it would be a fantastic idea if all the groups came together with their ideas, but I really want to encourage the groups, don't come to a meeting with the city in anger or hostility, let's be creative, let's be innovative, and let's work together to have solutions for, that would help everyone involved, thank you.
Thanks councillor Haggard, councillor Petola.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to councillor Mealy for the intent of your I think that council needs to be careful, and I might ask through the chair, CAO, for comments, or the CEO for comments, with regards to the wording of that motion, because while you're quite correct councillor Mealy, that that doesn't preclude the other things, the investigating of the demolition or transfer of ownership, it doesn't specifically direct staff to do that, and I think we need to be careful in our wording, so that the intent of council isn't just an intent, but is clearly stated, so that we're not asking staff to guess at what we want, but they know what we want, and, and what I heard in your motion was that intent, what I would like in your motion is actually saying that.
Councillor Mealy, go ahead.
Thank you very much, and then through you to councillor Petola, or, sorry, committee member Petola, sorry, if we can get that right, and I think what I did was I made that specifically, so that if that other motion comes forward, then we can have that as well, just to separate it, but to say that we can still put 3A on the table after this motion, and still have that. So again, and I, sorry if I, that was part of my intent that I wasn't able to spit out, sorry.
CAO.
Yeah, thanks, I think this all started before Christmas, when we are trying to set a five-year operational and capital plan, and really give the public an idea of what the city is up against, and I believe that is in the wake of the projected five-year plan increases on taxation for the city. So as we look at this, and as we involve the communication with groups, et cetera, what city, what the administration needs to know, is it the plan to put anything in the five-year operating and capital plan? Because at the end of the day, if council decides not to put any money towards these buildings, administration will not act on anything, because there will be no funds to act on. So again, on that, that's where administration, I believe this started from, the facility assessment is trying to set the future of the community and our facilities. We brought that forward because we had said earlier in the year, I believe it was in October, that we would try and bring as much information operationally as we head by Christmas, so we could have a thorough conversation to set that operational five-year plan and the capital plan regarding all of our facilities, and then have a service-level discussion, as there has been conversations at the council level about needing to possibly reduce services. So again, for, for administration to move forward on this operating and capital budget, I believe that's, that was the intention of the facility assessment report, and the option of these coming here, so really that's what council's looking for. Again, administration is always open to working with any service group on possibilities. The numbers in the report again are from a consultant, and usually they do put a contingency cost in there, and again, whether or not they're needed this year or in future years, that is for council to consider. I don't see anything in there that the, they recommended it being in there, they didn't say that the building was in imminent failure, and we asked for that projected outlook to make sure that we can, make sure we have the reserves in place, and proper financial planning for the future of the community. So in answer to councillor Petola's question, that is what administration's looking for.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I appreciate that, and thank you, Mr Fox, I do appreciate that, and so, and so twofold here, is that's why my motion first addresses the 2025 budget items before the budget, before the budget's set, so we can work together with the tenants and say, because who knows, maybe, they know, maybe the IHS knows somebody can do an energy audit for $10,000, so those are, so that's, that's that part, and I will be perfectly clear here, because again, this is our job, that after this motion, if that's necessary, I will make the motion of 3A, because that's just exploring and putting that in the budget, and then again, if it's something that doesn't happen in 2029, then we've planned for something, and maybe, just maybe, we've got a little bit of money in the kitty to do something else, because we've budgeted ahead of time, and I really appreciate staff, because that's what staff's really been trying to do, is set this council on a right directive, right direction in planning years out, don't just focus on this year, so again, planning for what could be, again, it's like a worst-case scenario, like I was taught years ago to always have a little bit of money in the kitty, because you never know what happens, and so again, and I, so I appreciate the CAO's words of advice, and, and his comments right here, so again, if we, if we are finished with this motion, and we pass this motion, I will still recommend that we still explore that process, timeline, and related costs of demolition, and have that in the budget, because it is proper, that's the proper thing to do, proper planning for this community in the budget.
Thank you councillor Mealy, and yeah, I agree, I think that, I think that it's important that we do both give, give time in order to explore options, but also don't leave it so open-ended that we don't have any direction for staff, so, yeah, if you want to go ahead and make your motion, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'll just read it again, and so the motion was to recommend to council that we work with the existing tenants at 3250 Ninth Avenue, again, the Curling Society, IHS, and the Sunshine Club, to address current 2025 budget items, and find options to address all issues identified in the facility condition assessment.
And it was seconded by councillor Solder. Oh, and it was seconded, okay, sorry, I missed that.
It's just the next one.
All right, so moved by councillor Mealy, seconded by councillor Solder, director Thorpe.
Thank you, Mr Chair, just for the benefit of the gallery, perhaps yourself, chair, or the corporate officer could give the gallery an update as far as how the timing works of when a motion may be passed by the committee, when it's engaged at council, so the community understands what sort of timeline staff would be reaching out.
Sure, yeah, that's, that's important, and yeah, I can, I can defer that to the corporate officer.
Thank you, Chair, so yes, so any recommendations that are made at the committee of the whole are brought forward to the next regular council meeting, which in this case will be Monday, January 27th, and so at that time, council will consider the recommendations, and they would be considered passed from there on.
Great, I pushed the wrong button.
Oh, is that you, sorry.
No, that was my bad. Great, okay, so we've got, we got a motion on the floor, are there any, are there any comments? Seeing none, all in favor? None opposed, motion carried. Now, we had discussed making additional motions with councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Mr Chair, so I will, and I, again, talking about proper planning, so I will move that the committee of the whole recommend council direct administration to explore the process, timeline, and related costs of demolishing all structures at the Industrial Heritage Centre located at 3250 Ninth Avenue, leaving the property build ready.
Moved by councillor Mealy, seconded by councillor Petola, and a comment from councillor Petola.
Seconded, yes, seconded, but also moving an amendment to add to the end of that, or transfer of ownership, or lease at market rates.
I consider that, I'm a friendly guy, I consider that friendly, if that's okay, I don't think it goes too far away from the scope of the motion, I would consider that friendly if that's.
Corporate officer.
Corporate officer, not so much.
If that was friendly, okay, then we'll have to make that an amendment, I think, so.
I'll tell you what I will do then, just one second, I will rescind the motion, and leave up to councillor Petola.
Okay, all right, seconders okay with that, okay?
Yeah, seconders okay with that, and Mr Chair, I would like to make a motion, that the committee of the whole recommend council direct administration to explore the process, timeline, and related costs of demolition, of demolishing all structures at the Industrial Heritage Centre located at 3250 Ninth Avenue, leaving the property build ready, or transfer of ownership of said building, or lease at market rates of said building.
All right, it has been moved and seconded, are there any comments? No? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion is carried. And again, I will just remind all those who are watching that that was, that the motion's intent was to gather information and explore all options. Councillor Petola, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I'd like to make a further motion, which I will make the motion and then speak to after the fact. I move that the committee of the whole recommend council direct administration to work with city staff and the Western Vancouver Island Industrial Heritage Society to explore the retention, relocation, or de-acceptioning of each of the artifacts located within the Industrial Heritage Centre.
Okay, is there a seconder? The mayor minions has seconded, so we do have a seconder, are there any comments? Councillor Solder.
I don't have problems with making our collection a little smaller, but I have a problem with getting rid of the collection, you know, I, I think we have lots in our, in our collection, and we could scale it down, but I don't think we should, and I will not support that, because you're saying the whole collection, basically, and I'm not going to support the collection.
Councillor Petola, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr Chair, and in fact councillor Solder, that was not the motion I made, the motion I made stated, explore the retention, first of all, the relocation, second of all, or the de-acceptioning, third of all. So what that speaks to, and the purpose of adding that in at this point in time, is because if we talk about the current building, or options for the current building, and the current building is possibly not salvageable for some strange reason at the end of the day, but yet there is a collection in that building, and something needs to be done with that collection, which is a whole different topic, I mean, there, there are hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially in that collection, which are assets the city has invested that return, no return on that investment. So somewhere along the line, we may decide that in order to facilitate the retention of 90% of that collection, we might sell 10% of it, I don't know, we may find a different facility that can only house 90% of that collection, and maybe that new facility needs to be financed by selling 10%, I don't know, but really, the facility and the collection are intricately related, and therefore, to not bind staff's hands in the discussions and the options being presented, within those options, we should also have discussion about the collection.
Thanks councillor Petola, yeah, I, I agree that it gives staff some more clear guidance in, in what topics we're going to discuss. Councillor Haggard, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I agree this is a discussion that should be had, but I think it's too early to have that discussion at this point, because until this is the final decisions are made about what's going to happen with the building, or if they're going to relocate, or where they're going to relocate, and once those decisions are finally made, then we can make that motion, I just think it's too early in the game right now, so I won't be supporting it.
Councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I, I have partial agreement with councillor Petola, and partial agreement with councillor Haggard, I agree a plan is needed, and an idea of what, what we need to do, I, but I do agree with councillor Haggard, it may be a little too early, I'd like to exhaust the other options first, we have until, well, sorry, the original was to 2029, so I'm going to assume that we're going to try to exhaust all options for the building first, and then look at if the building is not salvageable, or the collection needs to move. So I believe there is a time where that motion will come forward, and has to come forward, I just, maybe not today.
Mayor Minions.
Thank you, I am fine with the motion passing or not passing today, I think the discussion point of it is important, and on a larger scale, whether this motion today passes or not, I think it's important to recognize that a lot of the heritage assets that the city has were gifted to the city, and while they are, they give us the benefit of a very significant largely industrial collection, they come with a cost that at the time the city accepted the assets, or in some cases, did not even formally accept the assets, but ended up with the assets, the cost was not really recognized, understood, or planned for, so I think as we move forward in the future, we need to be more cognizant of what heritage assets we do take responsibility for, and I, I think that that's really, in my opinion, sort of the, the crux of the, the motion that's been made, as it relates to our current heritage collection, but as it relates to future assets as well, because sometimes a gift comes with large costs and responsibility, and I think that we, we're certainly seeing that, not specifically on this issue, but on, on several issues, as we, we start to plan a little bit more effectively than we have, than we have at times in the past, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, and I agree, and I think that it's, there's a lot of moving parts here, and I think that it is important for us to keep in mind that the, the assets themselves that are inside the building are, are not necessarily, they're a connected discussion, but they're not necessarily completely connected, like they're, they're their own conversation as well, and I, and I don't have a problem with us gaining a better understanding of what we have in that building, and what the priorities of the IHS are, and, and, you know, that it's, it's just another way for us to engage, so. the priorities of the IHS are, and, you know, it's just another way for us to engage. So yeah, I will be supporting that motion as well. And the motion has been made and seconded, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so unless there are any further comments, I'm going to call it to question. Sorry, was there?
Just turn it back on.
Okay, okay, okay. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it was four to three.
It was four to three.
We have seven now. We have seven now, remember that.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, but I had to do the count, because there's some of them on the screen there, so. Okay. Any other comments on this topic before we move on? No? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, and just to any members of the Heritage Society who are heading out now, I just want to thank you for being here tonight, and for engaging with us in good faith. So we are moving on to staff reports. We have service level reports from the manager, or sorry, Director of Economic Development, Human Resources, Corporate Services, and Community Safety and Social Development.
Just a quick, quick point of order. We'll just allow maybe the crowd to disperse before we get to the wise words of Mr. Deacon.
Sure, yeah, we'll take a quick recess, yeah. All right, I will call the meeting back to order. And we will move on to, thanks, Pat, for your patience. Director Deacon. And we will proceed with your, with your report.
Mr. Chair and members of the committee, at the December 9 regular meeting, council passed a resolution that read that they would look at the economic development budget, analyze the budget to ensure all expenditures are strategically aligned with the city's financial sustainability goals, focusing on reportable projects and potential reductions. So I have provided a report to council that provides a brief history on the economic development function, provides some information about the current situation, compares ourselves with other communities of 15,000 to 20,000 people in population, and then provides three options for the reduction of expenditures. One is that we, I recommend council direct administration to reduce the current budget by a total of $64,196. Second option, that council contract out the economic development function to a third party, probably saving more than $64,000, or the council terminate the economic development function and let market forces decide what happens with the community's economy. I provide pros and cons for each of the options, and then I do wish to make a comment about the budget on page 43, and in particular with respect to the revenues that were projected for 2024, both the actual and the variance. On an average year, the economic development function brings in approximately a million or a million and a quarter dollars for different projects that council has identified as essential to its corporate strategic plan. Most of those revenues do not accrue to the economic development function, and so I believe that that it is actually a mistake to project that revenues in 2024 were of that amount. Normally, what happens is that there's a grant in aid coming from the regional district for $10,500, and that we do earn an administration fee on some of the grant applications that we make. And we also earn monies this year, or sorry, in 2024, from movies. But in general, they either go into the administrative budget, or in the case of the McLean Mill, some of those revenues go towards the upkeep of the mill. So I guess belabor that point in part to say to council that there is not really an increase of, what is it? An increase in the budget of almost $100,000 in 2025. So essentially, it's the same amount of money budgeted for that time. So having said all of that, as I'm open to any questions that council might have about the budget or the options for reducing expenditures.
Thank you very much for that report. Councillor, does anybody have any questions for the director? Oh, councillor Haggard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank Pat for coming forward so quickly and readily with the decrease in his budget, and he did it with a big smile on your face, so thank you so much. I do have a bit of concern with decreasing the budget of the economic development off department, because we're at a very critical point in our community. We, you know, we have possible closures of a couple mills, or a mill in our community. Catalyst is always borderline, where how much longer they're going to be open. So there's lots of issues going on, and economic diversification is extremely important in moving our community forward. So I am concerned with this decrease, but if Mr. Deacon says he's going to be okay with this reduction, I'll take his word for it. But this is a very, very important department in our community and at City Hall, and I just want to ensure that we can move forward and still offer this high service that his department gives to everyone. Tomorrow, at the regional district meeting, I won't be there, but Todd and Cindy will be there. And one of the points of discussion is the $10,500 that is received from the regional district. This is another area that the regional district benefits from, but is not adequately support and dollars. So maybe you might want to mention that 40% of the people that benefit from the services, but we only receive $10,500, and that doesn't seem really equitable. And I say that every year when this comes up for budget discussions. You might want to repeat it again tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Haggard. Is there, oh, councillor Sola.
I definitely agree with councillor Haggard. I don't want to see the budget go down on economic development. And the reason is because of what's happening right now in, in our industry. Also, small businesses are starting to feel the effect, too, through the cost of living. The cost keeps escalating, so the small businesses are going to have a lot of struggle, and I think we need to really focus on our businesses and what we have in our community. And I don't want to see your budget, and I won't support the motion to go that route. It took a long time to get where we are, and Pat, you have brought in so much into, and not into our city, and I think we need to keep that momentum going. Thank you.
Councillor Petola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wonder if director Deacon could assist me in looking at page 43. I'm confused as to what those numbers represent, because when I started at the top, the budget for income is, seems to be, or revenues seems to be $65,000 for 2024. But then I go down to the bottom, and the overall taxation is $31 million. So is basically that just suggesting that, apart from the description that you already provided, that a bunch of the grant funding is recorded in other departments, is that basically saying that the department costs $31 million to run, but the the income is $65,000 and the expenses are $408,000? So I'm just not sure where the millions come from when we're talking about hundreds of thousands, and then it jumps to millions.
A CAO.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I'll try to do my best to explain this. The Director of Finance would be more equipped to, but he'll be here later on in the meeting. But at the very bottom there, it talks about the overall budget. And that's the overall city budget, and then the line under it that is green is talking about the charge of this function within the city. So economic development makes up 1.1% of the overall budget. So that's just to show on the service levels, what amount each department represents in the overall taxation. So we added that in because there has been questions at every single council meeting when we brought forward the service levels, what is that in overall taxation? So we thought we would add a better description at the very bottom of the sheet. So I hope that helps clarify.
Thank you perfectly. I get it now. So that just brings me to my next question, which is, what I didn't get from your report, director Deacon, through the chair, is where that $64,000 reduction comes from and how it's possible?
In 2024, I deliberately withheld spending money in two specific areas. One was marketing, and one was consulting fees or contract services. And I did that in an effort to prove that if I could save that money from the economic development budget in those two areas, that we could apply it to a second human resource in the economic development function, which we had had up until two years ago. And so that was an effort to prove that. I am convinced that we could still offer the same level of service in 2025 by reducing the budget by that amount, because I am confident that the situation that we find ourselves in with our respect to the creditor protection afforded to the sand group, and the concerns that the province has about its impact on our community, that we will be eligible for a good chunk of money in the Forest Impact Transition Fund. It's a fund that we've been given permission to apply in an off-cycle application to that. The fund actually ended in, on October 30 of 2024, but they are giving us permission to make an application to that fund. I'm confident that we'll receive some of the $500,000 that we will ask for. They did indicate that the fund is fully subscribed, and we're not likely to get it all, but I'm confident that we'll get a good portion.
Thank you. Councillor Sola.
All right, with those words, I can see where you're With those words, I can see where you're taking the money from, and I'm good with whatever we decide then. Thank you.
Mayor Minions.
Thank you. Most of the comments, I think, have already been made, but just wanted to recognize Mr. Deacon for coming forward with this. I think that council has asked our managers and directors to look for opportunities within their budgets, and economic development does not have a huge budget compared to some of our city departments, and this is a good savings, with an opportunity to still hopefully offer the same level of service. So, Pat, just want to really appreciate the effort that you put into this and your willingness to work with council on what we know is a really challenging budget year. So while I don't think that we should rule out the possibility of contracting out at some point or looking at a different version of the service, I don't think that the time is right for either of those options at this point in time. But I definitely think that the first option to reduce the budget by that $64,000 for this year, reevaluating towards the end of the year, if we want that to be a longer-term change or go back to our existing budget for next year, I think this is a good opportunity to save. Thanks.
Counselor Haggard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your service level report, Pat, you wrote, "One of our council priorities is to investigate a campground." Now, council turned down the investigating of a campground, not once, but twice, and it was part of a motion with like, I don't know how many other items, and I think it got slipped through. So I don't know if that really is a council priority, because there were so many other items included with that motion. So I would like to, instead of having it in a report as a council priority, I think that should be discussed with council in our next strategic plan review and not have staff spend time on it if it really is not one of our priorities. Thank you.
C A O.
Thank you very much for those comments, Counselor Haggard. Currently, it is in the same motion that we were supposed to look into all of those line items expeditiously and put off other projects. So currently, as the resolution sits, administration has the intention of moving forward and bringing the information on a business case for a campground. If council would like to change that direction, then I believe another motion would be required.
Thank you. Any other comments, Counselor Haggard?
I think if we were to realize that that was going to be included as a council priority, then I would have asked that we voted each item individually. So I would like to make a motion for clarification that this item be removed from economic development priority and be discussed further at our next strategic plan review. I just don't think that the city has the capacity in order to do that at this time. Thank you.
Are there any secanders? All right, seconded by Counselor Sola for discussion. Any comments? Counselor Petola.
I hope the mayor's still listening, because she has a memory that is ironclad. I recall different history transpiring than Counselor Haggard, but I'm not willing to say exactly what it was. It seemed to me that there was a motion, and I want to say it was passed, but I could be wrong, with regards to including the campground within the, and I might have this totally wrong, but within the master planning for Parks and Rec. And that's where the instruction to staff comes from.
C A O.
Yeah, through the chair, that is in the second motion from the December meeting that talks about a reduction in operational service levels that may also produce a net benefit in capital resources and opportunities to increase revenues through non-taxation sources, including but not limited to Civic Campground 400,000. And that was in the past one. That is where we took action on it, I believe, in the master plan and was also looking at it.
Okay.
Just wait, I think the corporate officer has clarification here as well.
Sure, yeah, corporate officer.
Thank you, Chair Dame. I can also speak to the original motion. I think that we might be alluding to, which was indeed referred out to the strategic plan review session that was held in spring/summer. So there was a motion specific to the construction of a campground facility, and it was referred out to the corporate strategic plan review. And yes, and then there was the financial plan motions that the C A O just referenced.
Okay. Well, we do have a motion on the floor. Are there any further comments on it?
We don't have a motion on the floor, but I know.
I think that Counselor Haggard made the motion, and I think you seconded for a discussion. I think I, yeah, okay. Mayor Minions.
Thank you. I just wanted to note, I think, that some confusion is happening here, because this has been kicked around a bit. So yes, we did refer it to master planning, which of course is not underway, and we referred it to council strategic planning, at which point it was not advanced as a priority. So I think the wording that might be feeling somewhat offensive is just a council strategic priority or a council priority, because it isn't necessarily that. That said, within the motion in December, I do recognize that it was there, and certainly council has the ability now to demote it if we would like. I just want to add that it is, I think, when something gets pushed to strategic, or pushed to master planning, and then also pushed to strategic planning, not advanced as a priority, and then is brought back to council, I think that's where the frustration is coming from, from Counselor Haggard, because this issue has been brought forward a number of times, and whether it's a good issue or not a good issue, council had sort of made a decision on the path with it, and then it was brought back in a group of other items. So I understand the frustration on that side. I just wanted to ask before we vote on this, maybe Mr. Deacon or someone could speak to what the action steps and time commitment from staff are for this item? Because I do think that there is some interest from council. It may not rank as a high priority, but if the time commitment is minimal and it's something that may have potential, then I'm not sure we need to demote it. However, if it's going to push other initiatives that, you know, we have been previously working on out of scope, then I think council should consider if it is that high of a priority. So maybe someone could speak to time commitment to get the current work done that we're working on.
Mr. Chair and members of the committee, some work has already been done on the matter. One of our employees, Parks Manager, has actually managed to bring to our attention a number of opportunities related to municipal campground, given his previous experience. So some work has been done. My highest priority will be, however, the application to the Forest Impact Transition Fund, because they have opened it specifically for us. It's an off-cycle application. They've said that if we get that application in within the next couple of weeks, that it would be adjudicated in February. So that's where I see the biggest bang for the buck coming from, but I do think that we could invest some time in it in the next two quarters, so before June, and come back to council, because it was an estimate that we might realize a non-tax revenue of up to $400,000 on it.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just add the comment that I appreciate Counselor Haggard raising that question, because there are a lot of competing priorities right now, and it is, it can be difficult to sort of maintain a hold on that. But I think that, given that progress has already been made, I'm comfortable with things as they are, but Counselor Petola.
It's a word in a report, sorry, Mr. Chair, it's a word in a report that has now been elevated to a position of an issue about council priorities. Council priorities are set where they're set. If it's an incorrect reference in a report, it's still just a reference in a report. I think, though, that I would move to refer this matter to the next in-camera session of council, because there are issues tied to this that concern matters of property and have been discussed in conjunction with matters of property, and thus the appropriate venue to discuss this further, as to our previous decisions and directions to staff on the matter would be in council. Motion to refer.
Some motion to refer. Okay, we have a seconder. Counselor Haggard, would you like to comment on that? Sorry that I missed your hand earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to point out that the city has a policy that we should not be competing against private businesses. There's many private campgrounds within the initial area of Port Alberni, and also Hoopacheset has a campground just outside of the city limits, and St. Shott is also going to be putting in a campground. So there's going to be lots of competition, and I just don't think this is something that the city should be getting into right now, when there's so many more pressing issues that we need to be working on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, we do have a motion on the floor. Let's, are there any other comments on the motion to refer this to an in-camera meeting? Counselor Mealy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. No, I agree. I think there's a couple pieces here to do with land, and I believe an in-camera discussion about this would be fruitful, and then make a, have a conversation there. But I believe it has to be in camera from here on on.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. There was a motion on the floor prior to Counselor Petola making his motion. Should we not deal with the first motion first?
I believe that a motion to refer overrides the motion that was on the floor, and I'm seeing the corporate officer nodding, so I think that we handled that correctly, as far as I can tell.
Okay, thank you.
So on the motion to refer to an in-camera meeting, we will, any other question or comments, sorry? We will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? All right. So that particular matter has been referred, and we will move back to the previous discussion that we were working on, which was the report before us. Counselor Mealy.
Thank you. Well, I'll make the first motion. That's easy, that the committee of the whole received the service level reports in economic development, human resources, corporate services, and community safety and social film for the period 2025-2029. We're doing, yeah, sorry, I apologize. I just realized now, it's just economic development. We don't, so we don't have to do that right now. We can just wait for the rest to go. Yeah, so I apologize then. Sorry.
Okay. Counselor Petola, go ahead.
All the bouncing ball. I will make the motion after that, as recommended by Director Deacon, that the committee of the whole recommend council direct administration to reduce the current economic development and business development allocation by a total of $64,196.
All right, moved by Counselor Petola, seconded by Counselor Sola. Are there any comments on that? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Mr. Deacon. Okay. All good, all good. We are now going to hear from the, yes, the Director of Human Resources.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members. So included in your agenda package is an updated version of the service level report for the Human Resources Department, which of course includes the municipal police support services as well. This report is largely unchanged since the last time I presented it, but it does include updated budget information for 2025. Because so much of the report is the same, I'm not going to go through all of it point by point, but obviously happy to answer any questions that you have. If I do just take you to the budget page, and unfortunately, I have my report not as part of the whole package, so I don't know what page it's on. Look, 49, thank you. So the human resources budget with the updated numbers since, different than the last time this level of service report was presented, it's, we obviously are a very lean department. What you have in front of us, sorry, in front of you, is essentially a status quo budget. You will see an increase in, some increases to contract services, and those are related to a couple of different items that happen on a cyclical nature. Every three or four years, there's different reviews or audits that we have to do as part of our human resource functions, so that represents the increase there. I guess I'll just keep going. If you go to the budget page for police support services, I think the, sorry, 52. Thank you, Counselor Mealy. I guess the one thing to note here is that there was discussion at yesterday's meeting regarding an additional position for the RCMP police support services, as well as funding for the secure police equipment room, and those are not reflected in these numbers as of yet, and those will be input into the next iteration.
Sure, yeah. Could we request at the page 52, or is it, yeah, 52? The budget, the budget, be brought up on the screen. Any questions?
Sorry, I just want to clarify, so, yeah, because we made that decision yesterday, so those numbers that we decided on yesterday are not in this, and that will be updated before the next. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the director. This might not be a question that you have an answer for or even need an answer for at this moment, because it doesn't necessarily affect this year's budgeting, but I noted in the news that some municipalities have undertaken audits of their police forces for effectiveness and essentially value for their dollar. I note that we are paying 25.8% of the budget from the city, so one out of every $4 goes to the police services. From a human resources perspective, because the nature of our services are by contract to the RCMP, is an audit of the service and its effectiveness something that is even a possibility? And would it be valuable to the city?
C A O. Yeah, thanks for the question. And through the chair, I know with a new OIC in the seat rate currently, I believe it would be prudent of us to allow the OIC to at least have some time in the seat before expending any expenditures on the effectiveness of our department. And in saying that, I do understand that in very preliminary conversations with two of the OICs, the review was very favorable of the actions of our department at this time. So again, with our OIC being only here less than a year currently, I think it would be beneficial to give some time and then review that question probably at a later time, even next year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, right, sorry, Mayor Minions. Mayor Minions.
Thank you. Krista, I'm wondering if you might not have this information today. And I know that you noted that some of the budget lines are cyclical and so, you know, higher some years than others for training and things like that. I'm wondering if we could get a bit of a history on what the actuals have been for the corporate-wide training and development budget line over, say, the last five years, omitting probably 2020 and 2021? Just noting that that came in $65,000 under budget last year. And I'm wondering, like our council travel and training budget, we often do come in quite a bit under. I'm wondering if that is normal of that line or if last year, 2024, was a bit of an outlier? So if you have history on that line today, that's great. And if not, maybe we could add that to our budget Q and A, and that could be brought back to council.
Yes, absolutely. I think that probably it's most prudent to bring back the actual figures. I think just... My comment would be absolutely 2020, 21, even into 2022. The hangover effect of COVID was very real with, you know, obviously people not attending in-person training. We do go through an exercise annually for area directors and managers to go through and kind of break down what the training is that's required for their department. So a lot of... A big portion of that is regulatory and compliance training. And so, you know, we do go through that level of detail. And I always encourage people to ensure that they develop training plans to make sure that training actually happens. So we don't end up in a situation where we have not kept that compliance training up. Having said that, I think that it'll be easier for us... Easy, sorry, for us to provide you that level of past history. And we can have a look at that.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much for your report. We will then move on to the Director of Corporate Services.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Dame and members of the committee for the opportunity to present on the Corporate Services Department today. So I'd like to take a few moments to provide you with an overview of our recent successes, the challenges we are currently facing, and our upcoming priorities within our three main service areas of council and legislative services, corporate services, and communications. Additionally, I'll share our budgetary information for 2024 and projections for the years 2025 through 2029. So as you'll note, in 2024, we are currently reflecting a surplus of $75,638. And this is due to under...
Counselor Solda is just requesting that the... This be added... Put up on the screen.
You sure? Sure.
Yeah.
Can't present and be the corporate officer at the same time. You guys are challenging me. Okay. I'm going to try to move through because there are two separate budgets. So yell at me if I haven't scrolled down. So, yes, so we are currently reflecting a surplus of the $75,000. And so that is an underutilization in contract services and position gaps. That final value will be confirmed once the year end is complete. This financial flexibility allowed us to allocate necessary funds for the by-election held in October. 2024 was marked by several notable successes. As mentioned, we successfully conducted the by-election to replace a counselor, which was crucial for maintaining council's operations. In addition to this, we established a guidebook for report writing to council designed to streamline our processes and enhance the clarity of our communications. And furthermore, we made significant strides in updating several bylaws and policies, which are essential for effective governance. Looking ahead to 2025, we anticipate a full utilization of our projected total budget. We do have a fully staffed department ready to meet our service commitments and address any emerging priorities. I'm just scrolling ahead here to the Corporate Services budget. However, we do face some pressing challenges. Many of our agreement reviews are currently in holdover status. Additionally, the increasing complexity of our meeting agendas presents an administrative challenge that we need to manage effectively. We also recognize that our records management processes require improvement to enhance efficiency. We are actively working on various master plans that will help guide future decisions and strategies. A key focus for 2025 will be the continued update and establishment of bylaws and policies to ensure that our governance remains relevant and effective. We'll also prioritize the renewal of agreements that are critical to our operations. We plan to conduct a review of council procedures bylaw in the second quarter to improve our meeting function and efficiency. And the Nuisance Abatement Working Group will persist in addressing nuisance properties. There is a need for policies to effectively govern our communications department. And... But we are currently constrained by limited resources. It's also essential that we evaluate our communication practices to ensure they are accessible to all members of our community. In 2025, we aim to finalize our existing communication plans, which are currently in draft form, and develop a comprehensive social media policy to further enhance our outreach efforts. As we plan for 2025, you will notice an increase in our budget to accommodate the development of a new website. Administration is committed to researching the most effective approach for this initiative to ensure that it meets the needs of our community and endeavor to have this ready to launch by year end. We continue to make meaningful progress in our initiatives while also addressing the challenges across all service areas. I welcome any questions or thoughts you may have regarding our initiatives or the budget as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right. Seeing none? We will now welcome the Director of Community Safety and Social Development.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the elevation of my position. So building on what the corporate officer, Director of Corporate Services has given you as the report, some of the priorities that I'll be talking about for community safety and social development include bylaw, include the Nuisance Abatement Working Group, et cetera. So starting with bylaw services, you have our service level report, which is largely unchanged from what we presented last time, although we were able to populate some of the figures within it. You'll notice with our bylaw budget, we appear to be severely over in our contract services because that has to do with expenditures for the Port Pub that we've incurred this year that have been allocated to the bylaw budget. Wages and benefits were lower than anticipated. And that's also due to a staff member that was off on leave. As far as our overall budget, it's largely, as others have presented, it's largely a minor increase in the bylaw budget because it has to do with our existing services that we provide. The Public Safety Building is also in our budget. We were... We actually came in quite a bit under in the budget. And so therefore, it's been projected to lower those expenditures for 2025 and forward. Bylaw Services also has the Animal Control Services contract. It was slightly over this year, $1,940. So with our council priorities for 2025, we're presenting our quarterly report with our recommendations at the council meeting on the 27th. So that's the bylaw area. If you'd like, I could entertain questions now or keep going through community policing and social development.
Sure, yeah. It sounds like Counselor Solda has a question.
Oh, and so does Counselor Haggard. Just a quick question regarding the Port Pub. So those were the expenses that we entailed and fines and that from Port Pub. So will that also be applied to the taxes? Which, who knows if we'll recoup? How does... So the public will know? Yes.
Well, it's serendipitous that I've been sitting beside the Director of Finance. So perhaps I'll defer that question to the Director of Finance.
Chair Dame, so to through... To Counselor Solda, yes, these funds that we expend for remediation orders are going back onto the property. And then it goes through the process for collection as any other property would, as far as tax sale, if it doesn't come to resolution by the end of the third year of taxation.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to be clear and make sure that's where we're going. So when people... When the public sees that line item, it's like, oh, my God. So just to be clear. Thank you.
Counselor Haggard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one question in your budget. Animal Control Services for $153,000, almost $154,000. I didn't realize that was under the bylaw department. Can you explain what that services is? Because I thought animal control fell under the SPCA. Can you just clarify that for me?
Yes, absolutely. It is a contract with the SPCA for that amount. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I wanted to ask about the animal control as well, recognizing it is the contract for the SPCA. I am aware that the regional district budgets the Alberni Valley portion, so Beaver Creek, Cherry Creek, Sprout Lake, and Beaufort budget a combined $6,000 a year for animal control. And the city of Port Alberni holds a contract for $155,000. While I could not say more positive things about the SPCA and the work that they provide in our community, I feel like the service that we're paying for is drastically out of line compared with what the outlying area is paying for. I know that we are in a contract with them. I know that it has a three-month termination. I would like information to be brought forward on the option that the regional district is using. And I think an evaluation to be done on if the service that we're paying for is still an affordable service for us compared with what possible alternatives may be available. So I think I'll make that a motion. I will move that council request staff prepare information on cancellation terms of the SPCA contract as well as explore options or explore the current option used by the regional district for their animal control.
All right. Moved by Mayor Minions, seconded by Counselor Solda. Well, it's been a long day. Are there any comments?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? I was just going to say that at tomorrow's Regional District Committee, a Committee of the Whole meeting, Animal Control Services is one of the items that are going to be brought up. So maybe Counselor Petola and Counselor Solda can talk about... You know, they need to start paying their fair share to the SPCA and see how that conversation goes.
Thank you. Thank you. Duly noted as well. Yeah. Comments? So Counselor Mealy?
Thank you very much, Chair Dame. I appreciate that. Yeah, I was just... That's a huge discrepancy between what we pay and what the regional district pays. So I would love to know exactly why. Sorry. Sorry, just hang on. Sorry, just hang on.
Timeout. We will take a brief recess. We will take a brief recess. We will take a brief recess.
We will take a brief recess.
We will take a brief recess.
are watching, you can still listen along. You just won't be able to see the, the video feed. All right, Councilor Mealy, back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Do appreciate that. So yeah, just the, the comment was is, is it's quite a discrepancy. So obviously there's a different level of service that the regional district gets than what we get in our contracts. So again, if, if Councilor Haggard has mentioned that our representatives are going to be talking about this tomorrow, or it's an opportunity to talk about it tomorrow, I'll leave it in the capable hands of Councilor Solder and Councilor Petola. But it's, we're looking at all options again. And again, I remember a time 20 odd years ago when we talked with the, the SPCA and the contract and what the options were as well. So this conversation isn't the first and won't be the last. It's our opportunity to look at all the options and maybe it's much like it was 20 odd years ago. We'll look at the options and go the SPCA is the right option. We just need to do our due diligence.
Can I get a motion to go past nine o'clock? I think that's when, all right, all in favor? Carried. So Councilor Petola.
Thank you, Chair Dame. The motion by Mayor Minions is certainly apt and appropriate. I'm a little concerned about running, asking more and more from staff at this time when they're already put off lots of work to fulfill our recent motions with regards to budgeting. I do recall that, it's not that we don't need the information. I certainly agree, we need the information. I recall that Mr. Satar from the SPCA was here not very long ago and provided a presentation about the types of services that we received as per our contract. And I think there was a lot of information in that presentation about why there was a significant differentiation between what we pay and what the regional district pays, basically because they don't have a lot of services. But certainly, I think maybe that could be reviewed, or, I mean, the report that Mayor's asked for is, is appropriate. I just don't want to cause a whole bunch more work when there's already a whole bunch more work going on. So I, I guess I don't know really what I'm trying to say, but that, that there may be a easier or shorter method of that report by just reviewing what Mr. Satar has provided and/or the contract that we have in writing as to what services we ask for.
Councilor Mealy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, no, I, again, it's, and I agree with Councilor Petola, the, the information's great and yes, and you're correct, Mr. Satar did come. So, but what I would, I think what I would like to do is allow our representatives to have that discussion at the Regional District Board tomorrow and then go forth and see what happens there.
Okay, Mayor Minions.
Thank you. Sorry, we couldn't hear anything, so we missed any discussion that's been had on the motion that I made. I just wanted to say, though, while we can certainly discuss this with the regional district, this is our contract. This is not a contract that the regional district has opted into. So I think those discussions are likely not going to go forward in any kind of way. I also recognize that every year the SPCA does come and attend and talk about the contract and the value that we're receiving. My motion is to, to explore formally, you know, what it would look like if we wanted to cancel this contract. And additionally, not to cancel it or serve notice, but rather to get information and explore, and additionally, to explore the option, the service for animal control that the regional district is using. Because for as long as I've been on council, the regional district has paid $4,000 to $6,000 a year for animal control, and we pay $155,000. So I think ultimately what we are paying is a subsidy to, to the SPCA. And I think it's a valuable service that, that obviously offers an incredible amount of value to our community. But if there's an animal control service available for under $10,000 for the regional district, then what we're paying is, is excessive. So I, I think it's worth discussion, especially in the budget year that we're talking about. We're looking at other contracts that we have external to the organization, and we need to be evaluating the importance of those external contracts and the operating subsidies that we're providing, the importance of those to the critical services that we are responsible for. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add the comment that I, I think that this is a good motion. I think that it is in line with what we're trying to do right now, with what, where we're trying to go. I, I do acknowledge Councilor Petola's remarks that apparently Councilor Haggard and the mayor missed, but along the lines that we, we just want to be cognizant of how much we're asking of staff in terms of our, where our priorities are. But I do think that this is in line with the priorities that we've discussed. And so, yeah, I certainly will be supporting it. Are there any other comments? All right, seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, and that was, we are still on the conversation here of community safety and social development. Were there any other questions? Councilor Petola?
Thank you, Chair Dame. The motion by Mayor Minions is certainly apt and appropriate. I'm a little concerned about running, asking more and more from staff at this time when they're already put off lots of work to fulfill our recent motions with regards to budgeting. I do recall that, it's not that we don't need the information. I certainly agree, we need the information. I recall that Mr. Satar from the SPCA was here not very long ago and provided a presentation about the types of services that we received as per our contract. And I think there was a lot of information in that presentation about why there was a significant differentiation between what we pay and what the regional district pays, basically because they don't have a lot of services. But certainly, I think maybe that could be reviewed, or, I, I mean, the report that Mayor's asked for is, is appropriate. I just don't want to cause a whole bunch more work when there's already a whole bunch more work going on. So I, I guess I don't know really what I'm trying to say, but that, that there may be a easier or shorter method of that report by just reviewing what Mr. Satar has provided and/or the contract that we have in writing as to what services we ask for.
Councilor Mealy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, no, I, again, it's, and I agree with Councilor Petola, the, the information's great and yes, and you're correct, Mr. Satar did come. So, but what I would, I think what I would like to do is allow our representatives to have that discussion at the Regional District Board tomorrow and then go forth and see what happens there.
Okay, Mayor Minions.
Thank you. Sorry, we couldn't hear anything, so we missed any discussion that's been had on the motion that I made. I just wanted to say, though, while we can certainly discuss this with the regional district, this is our contract. This is not a contract that the regional district has opted into. So I think those discussions are likely not going to go forward in any kind of way. I also recognize that every year the SPCA does come and attend and talk about the contract and the value that we're receiving. My motion is to, to explore formally, you know, what it would look like if we wanted to cancel this contract. And additionally, not to cancel it or serve notice, but rather to get information and explore, and additionally, to explore the option, the service for animal control that the regional district is using. Because for as long as I've been on council, the regional district has paid $4,000 to $6,000 a year for animal control, and we pay $155,000. So I think ultimately what we are paying is a subsidy to, to the SPCA. And I think it's a valuable service that, that obviously offers an incredible amount of value to our community. But if there's an animal control service available for under $10,000 for the regional district, then what we're paying is, is excessive. So I, I think it's worth discussion, especially in the budget year that we're talking about. We're looking at other contracts that we have external to the organization, and we need to be evaluating the importance of those external contracts and the operating subsidies that we're providing, the importance of those to the critical services that we are responsible for. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add the comment that I, I think that this is a good motion. I think that it is in line with what we're trying to do right now, with what, where we're trying to go. I, I do acknowledge Councilor Petola's remarks that apparently Councilor Haggard and the mayor missed, but along the lines that we, we just want to be cognizant of how much we're asking of staff in terms of our, where our priorities are. But I do think that this is in line with the priorities that we've discussed. And so, yeah, I certainly will be supporting it. Are there any other comments? All right, seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, and that was, we are still on the conversation here of community safety and social development. Were there any other questions? Councilor Petola?
Thank you, Chair Dame. Just for clarity's sake, Councilor Solder hasn't asked, and I'm surprised, so I will ask in her place. What about all these buildings that are vacant? And there's a $1,000 vacant building permit. I wonder if the director can comment on who should be enforcing that, if there are any plans for enforcing that, whether or not the revenues from that bylaw might increase in the future? Any information that you have? Thank you.
Through the chair, perhaps I'll defer that to the CAO as a, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I know this is top of mind with council at this, at this time and previous times. Really, bylaw services usually isn't the one to enforce this one. This one does go through our development services. And with current priorities and staff issues in the development service, and it has become a priority at that this time, we are hoping in 2025 to take more action with that bylaw. Of course, we'll work with bylaw, where bylaw often, often hands out notices or does some of the legwork for development services. They do work in coordination and as a team in many situations. In 2024, some of the buildings we were dealing with, as council knows, were quite complex and took a lot of staff resources in dealing with some of the major issues that we were working through in 2024. So hopefully, with some of those behind us in hopefully Q1 of 2025, that we can refocus that energy at other buildings and take appropriate action. Also, once our collective bargaining process is complete, hopefully we can resume with full staff contingency in our planning department that will allow more resources to focus on other areas dealing with vacant buildings, zoning, and different bylaw issues in, in that area of the city's business.
Thank you. Councilor Solder.
I just have to respond back to Councilor Petola. Just, I've asked this question many times, as you're aware of, and I've heard the same answer. And I'm really, it's one of my pet peeves about these empty buildings, especially with absentee landlords that don't care what's happening to their buildings, and they're, they live not in Port Alberni. So that's been a really pet peeve for years with me. I am really happy to see that, hear from the CAO now, that the 2025, the focus and the energy of these vacant buildings will be up there. And that makes me really happy because people are frustrated because derelict buildings, what happens to when they're not, they're empty, they become derelict, and then they, who cares? And we see a lot of those in our community, and there could be a lot done around our buildings. The, the interesting part is, is that the, the stores that are next to these derelict buildings, empty buildings, I call them derelict, but empty buildings, it's not fair for them to have this building go down, and it drags the other business down that has put so much money into fixing up their building while this building next to them is falling apart. And I really have a lot of issues with that. So I will be bringing this up from now on, now that I'm hearing 2025, we're looking at a new direction. So exciting. Thank you.
Way to wind your round, Councilor Petola. Thank you, Councilor Solder. Are there any other questions for the manager of community safety and social development?
Nice.
Seeing none. Thank you very much.
I think she's got a little bit more to go.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't, I didn't mean to rush you out. Carry on.
I'll carry on through into the community policing area and talk about the priorities and the budget. You'll notice with the community policing budget in particular, that 2024, the funding for the community policing program came from the emergency reserves. Going forward in 2025 to 2029, it'll come through taxation dollars. And so you'll see that the transfer from the emergency reserves is not there for those years. The priorities for community policing remain largely the same, although there's, there will be an emphasis on shifting to the needs of the community, particularly around things like crime prevention, active crime prevention, and graffiti cleanup, et cetera. So I'll just pause if there's any questions for on community policing at this time.
Any questions? No? Oh, Councilor Solder.
It's, it's not a question. I like where you're, the new direction that you're, you're going, and I think that's going to be a positive for the community because I believe the small businesses and that really need something, and I think you're gonna deliver that. Thank you.
And lastly, the, the other area that falls under our responsibility or my responsibility is the social development area, which is a, a new department. And in September of 2023, we're now about a year and a half into developing the strategies and working with our partners in social services and emergency services in the community on our, our social disruption and social issues. A couple of the successes that we've had is the creation of a continuum of care coalition, which is comprised of a number of different agencies in the, in the community. We have a meeting coming up on January the 22nd where we will be talking about the gaps in services and where those gaps have been identified. And we have a mapping project that we've actually mapped them out. We'll be presenting that at the coalition and then talking about addressing the gaps in services going forward. An example of one of those is this Friday, I have called a meeting with a number of different outreach teams in the community that deliver services through various agencies, Canadian Mental Health, CUISS Crisis Line Society, Island Health, the ACT team, the IART teams, various teams that exist in the community. One of the gaps in services that was identified was that the services are provided during the day, during the week, and not necessarily on weekends. Some do, and, and evenings. And of course, when things happen, it's quite often not at the optimal time, midnight on a Saturday of a long weekend when nobody's around. And so what we, what my job is to do, and my, my role is to facilitate and coordinate those discussions, to identify the gaps, and then perhaps the teams could then go back and explore options of having a cell phone service, for example, that they pass around, and have teams on call. So that's one of the things that we're looking forward to doing, and that discussion will be this Friday. We'll start with that. So, and then lastly, one of our big successes has been the launch of the Situation Table. Situation Table is a crisis response table of sorts, and situations that are risk-based that involve multiple agencies are brought to the Situation Table. We meet every Tuesday at the Public Safety Building, and various agencies, there's approximately 15 that meet. They bring forth complex situations that a single agency has identified. And then we discuss as a group whether there should be an intervention done by a smaller core team. And, and then those interventions with individuals who are at risk in our community occur. And so we had nine referrals since September, and six of the, of the individuals that were identified accepted some form of services. Those are six people that would not have, had not, have, had not, have, had those services otherwise. Talk quickly.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any further questions? No. Councilor Petola?
I'd like to make a motion that the Committee of the Whole received the service-level reports from economic development, human resources, corporate services, and community safety and social development for the period 2025 to 2029.
Moved by Councilor Petola, seconded by Councilor Solder. Any comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carried. All right. Thank you very much for the reports. Moving on, there is no correspondence. Onto new business. I will look to the Director of Finance for the, update on the 2025 to 2029 financial plan.
Thank you, Chair Dame. So obviously, we've made some changes with the financial
that some of the level of service documents differ than what we have in the financial plan components here, because it was a timing issue. We were making some changes. But, you know, the latest information was in this final document, and that's going to change because we do have some documents, or some changes that will be made in these documents by, by the Council if they are approved. So as we go forward, we'll document those and highlight how those have changed in the financial plan. So the presentation that we have in the, in the agenda tonight is all the level of service detail for the, the reports that are coming forward. So I'm not going to go into detail on, on specifics. Each director will bring that forward, and it will support just the understanding. So providing this to the Committee and Council and the public, it, it helps understand what it costs to deliver service. So we're grabbing some of the line items that often we're asked, well, you know, what is, what is the revenue for this? Or where's the offset? Or, or some of the questions that we've received over the years. So we're trying to put everything together. And as we've seen with the vacant building fee, maybe it wasn't in the right place, that maybe needs to go to development services as far as a revenue, you know, in that, in that way. So we are making adjustments. We'll continue to refine. But this is our first draft on the complete financial plan to Council and Committee to better understand the service delivery cost for each item. So, you know, this is one area that we, we wanted to improve, and that was in other common services. You know, if you, if you go into the financial plan, it's, it's a lot of combined costs, including insurance. And as we talk about the cost to run a facility such as the industrial heritage center, we also need to include the cost of the insurance. So when we're going through the process, you know, all of that goes in other common services. So as we look at, you know, refining, we'll bring a report forward to the Committee and Council to better allocate those insurance costs across each facility. So we see that. So we're making improvements as far as reporting in the actual cost for each, each service delivery. You know, usually I walk through the financial plan, as I mentioned. Spend, you know, probably a couple hours going through it with the Committee. Obviously, we aren't doing that and, and letting each department do that. But just noting a few items that we saw some changes, just to start some conversations and maybe areas that we'd like to look at further, is the service agreement with fire. Obviously, with the cancellation of the fire services agreement with the Colson Mill, that reduces the service agreement that we have for service, for fire services out at that mill. Lease revenue across the city has increased by 104,000. We're trying to achieve market value for a lot of our leases. But when we talk about expenses, I'll get to some of the changes that we made there. Museum is looking at increasing revenue, but then that's offset by, by the same level of expenditure for grants that would be incurred. So we're, you know, we can see that a lot easier now that we compare revenues and expenses for the service delivery of the museum. And fine revenues, obviously, last year we had a one-time increase in the total fines for 134,000. That's coming back down. So you'll see kind of a, an oddity in the revenue for bylaw in that way. When it comes to police services, this is largely driven by the, the contract costs. So we're seeing almost a million dollar increase year over year for that service. That's about 25 cents of every dollar that we tax for goes to police services. And that's the RCMP contract, and then, of course, the administration of, of the police services in the community. Fire services, also, we have collective agreement, contractual agreements that are, that are almost in sync across the province, and those are coming at a much higher rate than we anticipated in 2024 and again in 2025, as we see other, other situations evolve. So we have adjusted the financial plan to reflect some of the changes that we're seeing in the market. Administration for engineering, we've looked at just a reduction in that service with the allocation of wages for some of our, our, our staff to those services, trying to reflect the, the effort that's provided to provide the service from some of the, the staff. So we're, we're looking at that, and we look at that in a more of a regional district model, so that, you know, if there is managers that are working in the different areas, we're, we're starting to allocate that to that service. So it better reflects when we go to the ACRD or, or someone, this is the true value of providing the cost of the service. So there's some allocation there. Because when you put it into administratively, you know, overhead accounts, it, it doesn't reflect the true cost of providing the service. We obviously see solid waste increases for tipping fees at the ACRD also, that are just passed on, that we have to increase to support the delivery of solid waste services in the community. And then B C Transit, that, that has increased. We have seen some supports through COVID, but those are all gone now. And now we're seeing the cost of delivering the service as their contracts are coming up for renewal. And of course, we've, we talked about the Vancouver Island Regional Library. That's going up about 91,000. And then our lease policy, that's something that is an asset management change that we're, we're attempting to make sure that when we collect rent or lease payments for the buildings that we are leasing out, there's a funding going back into the reserve. So if you look at, you know, the Harbor Key, we're looking at North Island College, TBO. In the past, we haven't been putting money away. That's been going into general revenue and supporting the reduction of taxation. But as we start to populate these reserves, and I think it's a good policy that Council has done, as far as ensuring that we start to think about the asset management of these facilities, we're going to create reserves that we can now access when we need to do repair for windows or any roofs or whatnot. So it's a good policy change, good governance change. So, you know, in the first year, obviously, we're going to see reductions in revenues because we're now putting that into a reserve. But it's just good policy. So I, I thank Council and the Committee for making those changes because it's important that we start to build up the reserves for asset renewal. So, you know, I think I'm not going to go any further on some of the points. As I mentioned, we'll let our directors speak to their own departments. I think that was a direction of Council this past year. You know, usually it's just the C O and the Director of Finance presenting and then, and follow-up questions. But I think this is more informed, and hopefully this works for Council and the Committee to support the understanding of what's in the financial plan. I want to note that we will continue on with our normal schedule, but this is just an addition that will be supported through the level of service. So wanted to focus on this tonight. At our next meeting, we'll include the whole schedule so that it would be, you know, comparing what we are used to seeing, but using this as, as a betterment to ensure that you have the information you need. So with that, I'll turn it back to the Committee for any questions.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I, I really like the changes that are being made here. And I think that anytime we can make information more accessible to Council and to the public, it improves transparency, it improves decision-making, and I think this is exactly the direction that we need to go. Any other comments, Counselor Solder?
I was gonna echo, I was gonna echo the same thing. I don't think the mic's, oh, there we go. I really like the changes. What I really, really like is the percentage of overall taxation, or the increase to. That bullet there is great. You know, when you look at that, each department would be like a four, whatever percentage the tax would be. And, and I think it's great. When I look at the multiplex, and, and I look at it, it's 4.82% of the overall taxation. That'll give other people, the public, maybe, an understanding a little more where the pie, how the pie works. But I just want to verify, in the past, 1% of our taxes was approximately 2,000, 277,588. Is that still? Or has that, what is 1% of our taxes?
Chair, Chair Dame to Counselor Solder. So it's, last year it was around 31 million, so it's closer to 310,000 for 1%. And I'll ensure that I have that noted in the next staff report so that we can reference that. And then moving forward, maybe it becomes part of the overall package. So that it's just a reference point that Council and the Committee can refer to.
I think that's important, and I think, I believe the public needs to know that too, what that 1% is. And so what do we take away to bring a percentage down? Or what are we adding to, you know, to, that makes that increase? So, yeah, I like where, the new direction. I like this, this, and I like it broken down into departments that you've presented. So, thank you.
Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Chair Dame. Appreciate that. Thank you to the Director of Finance. This is great. I love page 80 altogether, just saying what the taxation was in 2024 to provide that service and what the change is for 2025. I think that's great. And then the overall percentage of taxation. And I, I do agree with Counselor Solder, just to have it on paper. I know, like, if you look at it, it's, it's an easy math equation. It's 3.2 million dollars, or it's whatever the budget divided by 100, and you find out what 1% is. But it is nice to have it on there for easy access for the community and, and the citizens. So I do agree with that. So, but I appreciate the level of in-depth that you've gone. And like, again, page 80, if everybody has a chance to look at that. It's a, is there any chance to bring in page 80? Sorry. Yeah, thanks. And the reason, and that's, that's great, just because then it shows, let's see here, what did I, what did I pick out here? Something in the middle. Public transit. So it cost us $830,000 to have that service last year. It's going to cost us 90, $919,000, $7850 for this year. So that's an increase of $88,962 to have that service for 2025. So it spells it out really nicely. I love it. It's a great resource, and I appreciate the work that you've done. Thank you so much. And the, and the rest of staff.
Yeah, anyone else? No, seeing none? All right.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, please do.
Make a motion that the Committee of the Whole receive the report, 2025-2029 Financial Plan dated January 8th, 2025, and provide recommendations to Council.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Motion carried.
Said provide recommendations to Council. Was that, no?
Yeah, Chair Dame to Counselor Mealy. So if, if there was any direction provided, that, that's there. So if, if the Committee feels like there's anything that we need to follow up on, by all means, provide it to us. We're looking for feedback on this. But as I mentioned, the directors will bring forward their departments. So I think that might be the best time to dig into their, their detail.
Does anybody have any thoughts on recommendations to Council on this, at this point? All right, seeing none. We will move on. Thank you very much for the report. And we will move on now to capital.
Thank you, Chair Dame. So along the same lines as we had with the operations, we're looking at, at capital. And, and bringing out capital separately so we can talk about it. I, you know, I think we, as administration, wanted to ensure that we have the detail there in, in a way. And if we do make any change, it's very deliberate and it's understood. So I'm, I'm hoping the information that we provided in the report tonight also provides some more clarity and understanding. So what is in the agenda tonight is the approved financial plan from 2024-2028 for the 2020, 2025 to, to 2028 year, plus our normal allocations within a lot of these capital items. So when you look at the overall plan for a lot of these services, there's often just placeholders. And as we work through our master plan, and, and we start to populate some of the, the capital that's needed, and we bring these back to Council, you'll see changes, obviously, in those allocations for future years. And we'll refine that and, and get the approval from Council to ensure that there is that, 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 that direction and that governance over the capital plan. So within this report also is the recommendations from the Facilities Department. Obviously, we've seen a shift. We've also seen a recommendation going to Council for the Aquatic Center. That's also within the same, same report. So that's been a recommendation to Council so we can make those changes and identify those. But the, the 2025 year for facilities is also, has some recommendations for change. And within the reports moving forward, as far as financial plan for capital, we'll note that we'll have a description of the projects. So there's a little bit more detail. So the reader, or if someone's trying to look up what's going on for that specific capital project, there's going to be more detail than just the one line that we had previously. So we'll build the capital plan as a cover page, as you see here. And then, and then when we go into the detail for each, each facility, each department, we would show some more detail and, and the, and the project description. I'm, I, you know, I believe this is achieving what Council was seeking as far as more clarity on, on the capital projects. And, and I, I hope this is a benefit to the Committee and Council and the public. So with that, you know, if there's any recommendations, any changes that you'd like to see, any, any supporting of the recommendation for facilities, obviously, we have some projects that we identified for 2025 that, that are not being recommended to come forward. But obviously, this is for discussion, and the Committee can defer or, or make recommendations at a later date if needed, or ask for additional information.
Okay, thank you very much. So Committee, is there any, any of these things that you want, any issues you want to raise? Any comments?
Great. Next.
No?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. So again, kudos to this. What a layout. I really love it. It's, and especially now that we're going to go through it with the, the different departments. So there are a few little things, like the parking lot upgrade at the Fire Department. But again, those can be saved for the time when the Fire Chief is here and we can have that chat. So, but again, kudos to this. It's, it's very open, and this is what we're going to try to do capital. This is the reason why. Makes it easy. It's all on paper. So thank you so much, once again, Director of Finance.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Yeah, agree. The layout is fantastic. It's really nice to see it clear. I would actually like to move that the Committee recommend to Council that the Fire Hall rear parking lot paving be moved out of the five-year financial plan.
Okay, moved by Mayor Minian, seconded by Counselor Solder. Any comments? Oh, Counselor Mealy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that. I think that's what I was going towards. I was just gonna wait to, to have the Fire Chief here to, to have that discussion. But again, it's one of those things. It's the rear parking lot, and does it need to be upgraded this year? Can it wait till next year? And that's, that's kind of where I was going with that. But I appreciate the motion, Madam Mayor.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Oh, oh, sorry, Mayor Minians.
Thank you. Was just gonna say that I know a few years ago, we had a multiplex parking lot, and we moved it out several years. And I think it actually hasn't gotten done yet, but the parking lot remains fine. I think that when we see things like this in our, in our financial plan, I think we have so many important infrastructure issues ahead of us that something like this should just literally be moved out until it is at a point where it's absolutely critical. And so I know we can wait on things like this, but I think we have so many changes to make in the financial plan that we should just get moving. And I don't think we really need the Fire Chief to, to tell us about the parking lot, though I do recognize there's other questions for the Fire Department that will certainly require information from the Fire Chief. So I just thought it was appropriate to get started on some of the changes today. Thanks.
Yeah, and I heartily agree. And I, I'm very happy to hear this motion. So any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Motion carries. Unopposed. Okay. Are there any other comments on the topic of capital comments or questions for the Director? Seeing none, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the SOMA fencing proj, oh, I'm sorry. Let's move, move receipt before we do that.
Yes, motion to receive. Sorry.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor? Carried. SOMA fencing project, Director.
So Chair Dame, you know, the SOMA site is obviously nearing completion as far as cleanup. And obviously, there was an opportunity, and, and there's community groups that have sought to use the site. And, and obviously, you know, it could be activated and, and the time being while we work towards redevelopment. And that could take a couple of years, obviously. But with that, you know, there is opportunity if Council should decide to, to fence off an area and provide
an area and provide the opportunity for user groups or, or lease or rent of, of the area. You know, there is a cost, of course, to do this. You know, it's estimated that it'd be about $65,000 to do the fencing and some of the cleanup work that needs to be done in there. But at this time, we're just providing the committee an opportunity to, to talk about this, and then maybe get ahead of any requests, should we need to. Because there is other options as far as allowing the user groups to do their own fencing, their own work on, on the site. But if we have a site that's ready to go to be utilized for the community, it is an option for the committee to consider. So we're bringing it forward because of the interest in the community. And, and we've heard an indication from counsel that this might be something that we'd like to see.
Thank you. What are the committee's thoughts? Counselor Solder.
I like the idea for user groups to use it, but I'm just kind of curious. Is there going to be a charge, a rental fee, because we are doing it with other areas?
CAO?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Again, administration would recommend that we do, do a charge fee, like some, something per square footage or for the site to recoup costs to go towards. Administration believes that any user group that's using a space that isn't accessed by all public availability at that time should come with a, a charge. Now, a lot of those, though, are covered through the CIP program, if applied, which then does not go back for paying for the actual item. It's still out of taxation. So where we would recommend a fee structure around this, once we have the site and we understand the appraisals for, for the vacant land, we may not see full revenue recoup in several years.
Just another question regarding, what about insurances? Whose insurance would a user group be under us or their own?
Thanks for the question. Any facility that we rent out, we have a general liability, but we always ask to be listed as additionally insured on the group that is using the site. So it's, it's very rare where we would waive insurance, and we would definitely not waive insurance without a council decision.
Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to either CAO or Director of Finance. So two questions. One's probably the easy part. The second one, you may not have the answer to, but I would love to hear it at least at one point. So when I look at the diagram, there is two existing gates. Would those gates continue to be there? Is it, are these, is this just an additional piece of fence? And then I kind of would just like to know how much we've spent on fencing on the project itself. It would be just a comparison to what we're going to be putting into it.
So the first part, like, those, like, those are new gates that are going to be going in, in there. So I think we can reuse one of the gates, but there, there will be a, a new gate that needs to be supplied to provide the costing for what we've spent so far in the fencing of some of the sites. I don't have that with me, but I can follow up and provide that detail for you.
Any other questions? Counselor Petola.
Not a question, but given that we're finding tens of thousands of dollars here and there, I would be against spending another $65,000 if that cost is not being recovered. And I mean, recovered in real dollars, not through the CIP fund. This is a unique parcel, and I, I don't know which groups have been inquiring about use. But it seems to me, because of the uniqueness and size of this parcel, that it does command a real cost that will, and should be calculated in an amount that will lead to significant cost recovery. I'm not saying $65,000 in one year, but I, I think at an appropriate market rate without any waiver on those fees. And if that was the case, I would certainly support this, because I do believe that allowing public access to the site as much as possible, as soon as possible, certainly will be a benefit to the community, even as the development is ongoing. So given those provisos, I would support this. But those provisos are not specifically written in the motion. So it would require an addition.
Thank you. Director of Finance, do we, do we have a general idea of, I'm putting you on the spot here, and I understand that you probably don't have this information in front of you, but do we have a general idea of what, like, a rental cost might look like in order to achieve anything approaching cost recovery?
So through the chair, we have reached out to an appraisal company to get appraisals of different types of properties. So we can evaluate each property and have a number to back that up. The current square footage rate for something like Spirit Square down at Harbor Key would be about $4 a square foot. So if you were doing that on this site, and we did not allow any other type of grant funding from the city on it, it would be a substantial rental for the full site. So depending if they were doing less, then that would, it would depend on the amount of site they wanted to use as well. But if it was the full site, it would be a, a substantial cost, and we would have recovery if the groups that want to use it wanted to rent it for that value.
Right, thank you. So we could be in a situation where even if we, thank you, even if we put full, you know, cost recovery rate on it, we might just be pricing people out of the rental, essentially. So there would be no point in putting the investment in it in the first place in that case. Mayor Minians.
Thank you. I was just gonna say something similar. I think ultimately, it's unlikely that we are going to get people wanting to rent this space from us for short periods of time and pay market value. What we are likely to get is community groups wanting to use it for free, which I think is fantastic. If they can, and if the space works, then the more people we can get down there, the better. However, do we have money in our budget to spend $65,000 on a fence this year? I would say no. If we want to spend $65,000 on a fence, I would say we do it with the full understanding that we are likely to recover very little of that ever. So if we want to do that as a community initiative, great, but I don't think we should do it with the illusion that we're going to end up earning those, that money back. And I would personally say, just with the other changes that we're trying to make to our budget, that it's not the year for it, unfortunately. Unless a big event were to come forward and want to pay us good market value, and it was gonna, you know, go a significant ways towards that, then I would reconsider. But I, I personally wouldn't support adding it into our budget at this point in time.
Yeah, I would agree. That's sort of similar to where I'm at right now, is this sounds like a great idea. I would love to see that property being used. I would love to see the, the community down on the waterfront enjoying it. But investing $65,000 right now doesn't feel like it's in line with the other conversations that we're having. So yeah, any other comments? CAO?
Through the chair, if counsel does not pass this tonight, we will make the user groups aware of the cost, and that counsel may reconsider if those costs can be absorbed somewhere else. But dealing with the operational budget and capital expenditures this year, that it's not something that counsel can spend taxpayers' dollars on in this year to do. If any user groups do have any creative ways of moving this forward, we'll come back to counsel and let you know.
That's great. Yeah, I like to hear that. I think that's, that's perfect, because certainly if there is an opportunity to, as has been mentioned previous, you know, achieve close to cost recovery on this, then, then of course, we should do it. Counselor Haggard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna suggest, I think this is a good initiative, but as everyone, I think we all agree that we just don't have the money this year. But maybe can we put, like, just an asterisk or a note at the bottom? And if some, some, unforeseen, we find a pot of money somewhere, then maybe it's something that we could revisit, you know, as we get closer to the end of our budget period, just so we won't forget about it, in case we decide to want to do, do it, and our budget is coming more in line, you know, in a couple of months?
Yeah, I like that.
But maybe just an asterisk or a star at the bottom of the budget.
Yeah, I, I like that. I appreciate it. Just, just in case we find that buried treasure on the SOMASS land, for sure.
Exactly.
And do we need a motion for that, or is that just something that staff can know?
Through the chair, I don't believe the direction is to put this in the budget. I think it's more or less to make ourselves aware, to remind counsel, as the budget continues, that this is here. So we will try to do that. Again, I'm guessing that some user groups that were interested in, in the site may be coming forward too. So, you know, we'll keep counsel abreast of what, what is happening. But I don't believe at this time a motion to put it somewhere would, would be the way to move forward.
Perfect, thank you. Counselor Solder.
Just a quick question. So a user group, we're, we're looking at fencing or outlining the whole outline, fencing that whole outline that we just saw up on the screen there. Is there, why do we have to fence it? I mean, just fence where they can't enter and leave the other parts open, and leave it as an open space, clean up whatever the grounds are. So, you know, so they can't enter the other parts of the site, but just fence that area and just leave it open. Why do we need to fence it? I see your hand going up over there.
CAO?
Yeah, through the chair, there is a fence around the complete site currently. If we were to fence off the site where there is more liability risk, we would need to spend money to fence that. That's the area that is highlighted there. If a user group wanted to use a smaller site or the full site and wanted to pay for temporary fencing to secure the place, that would be an option, and we can still make them aware of that. Again, but it would be quite expensive to rent the temporary fencing, get it installed, and take it away for every event. However, if a user group was interested in doing that and making sure the site is safe, having the insurance for it, then of course, administration would bring that back to counsel. However, this, this area here, if we made the entire area safe, it would be just a one-time cost instead of several groups' ongoing rental costs. You know, we may get some community groups to come forward and ask counsel to pay for temporary fencing to for an event through either the CIP or through just a request of counsel. So those may come forward anyway. But again, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that we keep counsel aware of the site and the intentions of user groups as we move forward.
Great, thank you. Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe then, at this point, a motion to receive the report would probably be the best. So I'll make that motion.
Moved by Counselor Mealy, and seconded by Counselor Petola. Any comments? Counselor Solder.
I'm just looking, sorry, I just am not, I'm lousy on maps anyways. But the new fencing is where all the buildings used to be? Like, where is the building I'm looking at? What am I looking at? Yeah. I understand the orange is the existing. So can't you move the orange over to where the red is and have the other part open? That's where, like, I'm looking at that. Why can't you change them around?
CAO?
So through the chair, moving chain-linked fence is more expensive than rolling out new fence. So it's not just as simple as cutting off the posts that are concreted into the ground and moving it over, and then rolling the fence up, and then re-rolling it out again. It's actually more expensive to reuse chain-linked fence. So again, we did look at the most economic way of fencing the property, and we, we did get the costs from current contractors that have been doing fencing on site.
I tried.
Thanks. Any other comments? We have a motion on the floor. Sorry, call the question. All in favor? Carried. None opposed. Thank you very much. Okay. On to question period. So kudos to everyone who hung in there through that very long meeting. Carolyn.
Yeah, I just want to address what you were just talking there, really briefly. I totally agree with you. As one of the larger user groups there last year, yeah, I, I believe in baby steps, you know, because it's a lot of things that are going on with this SOMASS site, too, and a lot of unknowns, even though you've done your research and everything else and, and site things. I totally agree. It's not the year for that. And user groups just have to kind of step back and just ease into things. So on that note, I just wanted to clarify something with that motion to do with the heritage, industrial heritage. Market value, was that in there? Were you talking about re, exploring, selling the property? Yeah. Was that a market value? And it was a market value? So I have, I've got a little niggly problem with the wording marketplace, because in all honesty, with those user groups that have been there for a long time, I believe the curlers since day one, I'd like to see you explore selling it to them for a dollar. And then they can raise their own funds and apply for grants and in-kind donations. So I'm just wondering if that wording in there from a legal standpoint prevents that.
CAO?
Or is this just all exploring?
Yeah, that is correct. It is all exploring. The first motion was actually to talk to the user groups and see if there is a, a means for them to take ownership of the building or any of the options. But also, the second motion also is explore all options. So I'm guessing, once and if counsel passes this motion, that is what we would be doing, is exploring all options.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that they can still, that option is still there.
Yeah, Counselor Mealy, go ahead.
Sorry, and that's, that was why I had the discussion about the grants that, that you brought forward earlier on, just because it is a possibility that there's a different revenue stream for a nonprofit, for an organization. And so that's part of, one of the many options that we're going to be looking at.
Yeah, definitely. So I, I wouldn't want to curtail that in any way with any legal language. Okay, thank you. Thank you for time.
Yeah, thanks for coming up. Mr. Anderson.
Guess what I want to talk about? Pardon me? Public input period. I want this matter cleared up once and for all. I'm glad that you allowed that other speaker, Chairperson, because I meant it's come up on a point of order, which wouldn't have interfered with the, the number of speakers. And I was really remiss in doing that. So I'm glad you did that. I also want to recognize, I know it's a hard job, especially if you get thrown into your position. And, you know, it's a learning curve. But I have to disagree with you when you say that the Chairperson, if I, I have to lead up, the Chairperson can determine whether, after someone speaks at the podium, that you could determine whether questions can be put by the person to the city council, or whether the city council can respond back in a form of debate. If I may just, when John Douglas, when he was first mayor, brought this into practice, I believe what he meant was, here's an opportunity for members of the public to come up to this podium and speak what's on their mind. It didn't matter whether counsel agreed or disagreed. It was an opportunity for them to do that without being questioned. We only had two members of council this time that provided input afterwards, but it could be everyone in the council. Now, this person coming up at the podium is faced with debating with the rest of the council in what they came up to talk about, what they felt about an issue. And that, I think, is what John Douglas meant by, by, by putting those rules in. You can speak your mind, you- you can speak your mind, you sit down, you had three minutes. There is no input or no questions rather and no input. So I have to go, I have to disagree that the the chairperson or the mayor and at the council meetings has the right to determine whether this can or cannot be.
Sure. Can I take that as a question or?
No, I can't. No, I, it.
It is question period. So.
I just, uh, I was.
If I could answer.
As expecting you to say that because I just get surprised at how many people can give a little.
I don't mind if you want to carry on, but, but I'm, I'm hoping there's a question to answer.
Well, that, well, I'm, I'm determined. I could turn around and say how many people agree with my interpretation. I'm reluctant to do it because I don't think there's too many of the councils are going to speak against, against the chairperson when you voiced your opinion. Or I could certainly say, because I want this resolved, it's been brought up so many times, we've been playing table tennis. Or I could ask for access to all the information coming from the beginning of this process today. Because I would like to know when it, when it's changed. That's a question. If you can give me that now, when it changed to a process where it's a debate that goes on. That's fair enough. Or, or if you can say that with no uncertainty, that you're allowed to, to have this conversation between council and, and the person at the podium.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and no, I can't say with no uncertainty because, uh, I'm learning new things all the time. Uh, and so that was the best of my understanding. Uh, and it's not even a matter of my opinion. It was just my understanding and I'm happy to say that I was wrong if I was wrong. Um, and they are, uh, currently I can see that the corporate officer is, uh, is looking. So, um, but the, the mayor has her hand up, so I will go to her.
Thank you.
Or anyone else?
Thank you. I had my hand up, so, uh, he's going to me because I had my hand up. Um, so thank you, Mr. Anderson, for, um, the question. Just in our, um, council procedures bylaw, um, under section, uh, forty-one, public input period, item six, council or committee members may ask or answer questions of a member of the public who is addressing the committee but must not enter into a debate. The presiding member may refer members of the public to, um, the appropriate department committee for response. So there is some gray area there. However, it is clear that, um, council may not enter into a debate. Um, so there is some discretion, absolutely. Um, and council, as you'll know, will, um, sometimes put their hand up to, to add um, information, but what we do try to avoid, and I think what, um, what Counselor Dame, Chair Dame, um, tried to avoid tonight was having anyone enter into a debate. So I don't think anything was out of line, but appreciate that you're looking for clarification and I would refer you to our council procedures bylaw for that clarification because that's where it lies.
And if I may respond to that.
Sure.
Is that?
Yeah.
I don't doubt that that's in, 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 in the bylaws, but I'd like to know when that change was made. I can't, I come to a lot of council meetings and I never remember that change being made. And that's why I'm going to formally request the all access to documentation minutes, et cetera, that led up to this change that John Douglas put forward. Because why he did it was done and was an excellent idea to get public a voice to speak. And there's three members here right now that was around, well, two and, and around when John Douglas made that proposal as mayor.
So I think that that language that you're referring to is still in there, that, that the purpose of input period is not to engage, not to, um, to engage in debate. And that's certainly, I think, the, the ideal way to do it. Um, out of respect for my fellow counselors, if they, if they have something to add to the conversation that isn't, uh, creating a debate, then, then that is why I, I, I chose to do that today. Um, whether I, I would make a habit of that as chair, I, probably not, but, um, uh, that's what I chose to do today. And, and, and it sounds like that was within, um, the bylaw. Uh, but I can't, I don't know when the date was. And, um, so I'm going to refer to, uh, the C A O and the corporate officer for that.
It was June twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
What, what was?
June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. So it was when we, uh, when we updated our procedures bylaw.
Okay, that, that, you're missing my question. I'm, I'm trying to find out. It, it can be done, but I'm closed doors. I don't remember this being addressed here. I may have missed it as well. I'm not.
It, it was in a, it was in a.
But why did the change happen from John Douglas's, uh, uh, policy today?
Well, there, there would have been a discussion that led to that, uh, and it would have been a council decision. So.
Then I would appreciate it if someone, just, is that the date of the council meeting?
Go ahead, Shari. Mayor Minions.
Sorry, I was, I still meant to pass it to you.
Sorry, I was, um, that's the date the bylaw was changed. Uh, Mr. Anderson, there were a number of meetings that led up to that, committee of the whole meetings, council meetings. You were at them. Um, you participated in some of the discussion. We did hear your input on this specific item, um, as we reviewed, um, council's procedure bylaw. Um, I think that, uh, unless anyone else has anything to add, the, this question has been answered.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, did you have any other further questions, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, my, my final comment on this.
I just have one question, one thing.
Yes, please.
Um, all these, are the, the committee of the whole meetings are recorded and I'm wondering if this was recorded that you could go back on YouTube and take a look, you know? Um, but I'm just saying that, or are they on our website? I'm not sure. Um, maybe the C A O or the corporate officer can answer that. And then you can see if you were there, the comments and everything about it.
There was also three meetings more recently where we had this debate. Uh, mayor was on. Pardon me?
Okay, C A O. And, and then I think we can wrap this question up.
Sure. Um, you know, lots of bylaws are changed at lots of times. Um, they are changed in a, a public forum and this one was discussed at length. Um, again, uh, it is in the record of when this new bylaw was adopted. Um, to go back and look at other bylaws, uh, you could, uh, probably research that, but, uh, if you wanted to go back and find out the exact dates, I believe the mayor, uh, is, is right on the date it started. Um, and, uh, on the current bylaw, it also has the dates of when, uh, the bylaw was, uh, adopted as amended. Um, so it has on there, uh, on the page right now, I can look at, uh, bylaw forty-eight sixty was, uh, adopted February tenth, uh, twenty fifteen. Then it was, uh, adopted again, March fourteenth, twenty sixteen, again, June twelfth, two thousand seventeen, again, March twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, and then adopted again on June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. So those are the dates when the bylaw was changed, um, formally.
And when was John Douglas elected mayor? I'm just sorry, I can't remember.
I, I can't either, but I, I know if you Google it, it, it does.
I will. So my last request is, could the corporate officer, someone send me all this information on the dates and times? I don't, I believe in what you say, but there's something missing here.
I won't be sending you the dates and times, but what I can do is send you the consolidated bylaw, which reflects all of the changes and amendments.
I've already seen that.
That, that is the timing and the dates that you may look up then.
So what I'm requesting, unless I have to pay my ten dollars to get it, all information, re, the minutes of meetings, the documentations, where I can access it on the internet.
Mr. Anderson, did you have any further questions?
But that's what I'm asking for. If you want me to go pay my ten dollars, I will do that.
Counselor Mealy, uh, has, uh, something he'd like to.
No, I was just going to say the, it's a matter of public record and those, so I would look at the committee of the whole meeting before that last date, and that's probably where the discussion happens. So, but it would be, it would be on record on, on, online, sir.
Remember any long-term.
Are there, are there any other members of the public who would like to ask a question? Yeah, come on up, Dave.
Late night, I'll try and keep this quick. Glad there's no YouTube video because I'm a radio guy. Uh, just wondering, uh, so twenty-five cents of every dollar in taxation goes to police. I would suggest to you that there's zero crime rate. We have not received a police statistics report in two years. Can you please get me police reports, statistics for the past two years? Because they don't seem to exist. They're asking for more money. We don't have the stats to back it up. I'm hoping you do. I've been trying to find them. I haven't done so. Second question. I received a bill, business license invoice for the Port Alberni toy run for two hundred and twenty dollars. I'm hoping this is an error. Please let me know. Thank you. Uh, by the way, David Wiltshire.
Gotcha. Yeah, uh, C A O, um, can I go to you for the, um, the first question on the police reports?
Um, through the chair, I know that, uh, the new O I C has, uh, committed to, uh, coming to, uh, uh, give, uh, quarterly updates, um, to council and the public. Um, so, uh, I, I can answer that one. Uh, for the second one, I would have to look into it.
All right, yes. So, um, go ahead, Leslie.
Hi, uh, Leslie Willarias, Port Alberni, B C. Uh, three questions. Uh, my first one is directed to the finance. Uh, Andrew McGefford, uh, core services, or maybe council can answer this. What are the core services of the city of Port Alberni?
C A O.
It's, uh, really interesting, uh, how different people define core services. So, uh, you know, I've heard core services defined as through emergency management lens. Um, I've heard core services defined as life, uh, sustaining, um, types. And, uh, that's where it gets a little interesting because, uh, you can vary core services to mean what means community. Um, and what sustains mental health. Um, you know, we have doctors that come here that say part of health is, uh, a core service of a community is active transportation, trails, a pool, um, cultural events. Um, so it really depends on, on how you define that as, is it, uh, essential services for, uh, a complete community? Is it essential services in the emergency management? Um, and, uh, that, that is a really good question because what's essential for each community depends on what that community is, is speaking to. So I know the city of Port Alberni, uh, right now is undergoing master, uh, uh, plans and understanding from community what, uh, makes a community from, uh, their point of view. Um, that could be, uh, deeming some of those services essential. Um, so I think it's, it is a complex question, even though it seems relatively easy. Um, but it really depends on your, uh, your definition of those core services. The common one in government is that it's water, sewer are, are core services. Um, uh, you know, as the province dictates it, it is water, sewer, uh, fire, uh, inspection, not actual fire protection. So there's, there's two different, uh, aspects on that. Uh, it's not a core service to pave all our roads. If, uh, the public's happy with gravel roads, uh, then that would not be considered essential. So, uh, uh, again, uh, essential services, um, really depends on what that community is deeming as essential. So, or core services, uh, you can use that word interchangeably. So, um, again, I, I've been in lots of conversations with public, uh, uh, here in Port Alberni and, and in different places that I've worked about the nuances of different people's perspective on that question. So, um, as a city manager, I would say, uh, the core services are that that the public wants to maintain that community identity. And, uh, that there is, uh, is, in lies the question, is really difficult for council to decide on what are those core services, uh, that makes Port Alberni, Port Alberni. So I, I know I didn't probably answer your question.
Nope.
But, uh, I hope I explained why it's, it's a hard question to answer.
I, I understand it is a hard question to answer, except it's getting bandied around at budget time. And if you're going to use that terminology, then I'd like to know what the core services are that council is supporting.
Well, I suppose, uh, that could vary counselor to counselor. Um, but I, I think, uh, yeah, I think that when, when we use it, we're, we're talking about, um, the big things, the big extent expenditures, the big chunks of the, of the, of the budget. I would, I would think that's how, that's how I take it to mean. And and it sounds like it's somewhat subjective, so.
Uh, you haven't stated anything.
No, I, because I don't have a clear answer for you, Leslie. Yeah, I apologize.
Then how can you form your budget and say that it's on core services?
Uh, core services are the things that the community wants. So it's an ongoing discussion with the community to, to decide and define what, what the core services are, I suppose, is, um, is the challenge that we face. That is, that is the, the whole game, the whole, yeah.
Yeah, but again, you said you've got limited time in order to propose this budget. So you must have a, a frame of mind or ideas in mind of what you consider core services.
C A O.
I believe, um, there currently council is looking at, uh, service levels. Um, and I think that is what they're trying to look at is each service that the city offers, what is that level of service that the community wants and can afford? And I believe that's what you're seeing happening, uh, with this council, being faced with changes in the industry, changes in the demographic of the city, um, and where we're sitting in taxation. Um, so, you know, looking at the ongoing taxation and the possible increase in budget, um, council has said, hey, let's take a review of all services and let's have that dialogue. And, uh, I believe that's why we started the conversation of levels of service early, uh, this year and council has decided to, uh, uh, direct to us to look at levels of services in the departments. I don't think it'll be fully satisfied, uh, maybe even by this year. I think, uh, budgeting in Port Alberni will be more of a year-round, uh, event moving forward in the sense that, uh, until we can figure out exactly where the community is, uh, uh, on those levels of services, uh, that'll be an ongoing conversation. Um, I'm not trying to speak for council. I'm just, uh, throwing that out there by direction that, uh, council has given us, uh, to look at our service levels and bring back reports. And you might even see in there that, uh, there's different opinions on councils on those levels of service. And, uh, sometimes some of the votes are four, three, um, and ongoing discussion. There's nights like tonight where we bring up a service level and a lot of the public shows up and there's lots of conversations about it. So, and that can sometimes, uh, change the direction on where council is going. So I'm not trying to speak for, for council, but I would say that is my, uh, understanding from where we're at currently and trying to understand the levels of service.
Yeah, I put together a, a, a quick list here, um, for myself. Uh, it would include public safety, public works, uh, economic development, recreation and culture, uh, public utilities and infrastructure. So there's a few, uh, things that I think, um, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Mealy.
And just to, just to show kind of that it's, it's, you know, different opinions here. So, and, and the chair said it's the, uh, he believes it's what the community wants. I believe it's what the community needs. So meaning, I need drinking water, I need sewer, I need roads. Uh, and I'm a guy who uses the multiplex all the time, but I wouldn't consider the multiplex a core service when it comes to something that we need. Right? Doesn't mean I'm not going to vote for the multiplex. I love the multiplex. I spend, I've spent thirty, you know, twenty years in that one and more in the other one. So I love it. But if, if I'm looking at it from a core service, I wa, I need water for the residents, I need sewer for the residents, I need road for the residents. Right? And things like that. So it's, uh, so what is core to one is not core to another. And so that's why we go through this, as Mr. Fox said, we go through the service level and go what is needed and then work from there. So, again, not an easy question to answer, but as you can tell, it's, you know, we all have our different opinion of what core is.
Yeah. Uh, just getting back to water and sewer, it's, um, not under taxation because that's a service charge. So it's not part of your budget except for the capital. And that is coming out of the water and sewer reserves. Yeah. Okay. End of that one. That's good. Okay. My next one is, uh, for Andrew and just to understand the, um, budget. And I'm just wondering what the twenty twenty-four actual, it's not to December thirty-first yet. It's, uh, probably got another date to it.
Uh, Chair Dame to the member of public. Uh, so, yeah, the twenty twenty-four actual is as of cr- creation of the, of the statement. So we still have some work to do to finalize the actual. Uh, normally we hold that back, but in order to provide that, that, that clarity and where we're at, um, it's in the audit committee also.
Yeah.
Um, as you, as you know, um, so I think just providing the information and qualifying that this is not finalized, this won't be finalized until at least probably the end of February because
Yeah.
our, our cutoff for invoicing is, is at the end of January. our cutoff for invoicing is at the end of January, by the time we get everything in. And then it takes a while to make sure that we do our year-end reviews, as you well know.
I do know. Okay, so it's just a rough estimate as of December 31st then, first through.
Yeah, I think overall, I think, you know, at this point of the year, a lot of the expenditures have been in and we've been checking and, you know, obviously, we do have some opportunity to make amendments if we find something that needs to be adjusted. But we'll bring that forward and know that if need be.
Okay. Just related to that, in the audit committee, because you mentioned that, the audit committee actually happens after the last committee of the whole meeting, is that correct, for the budget?
Chair dame, I can't, I'm not sure. It may be, because it's the end of February, I believe, but.
Yeah, and the last committee of the whole is prior to that, is it not? There was no date on the city website, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
Next committee of the whole meeting is January 20th.
We would have to bring that up.
January 20th.
January 20th.
Committee of the whole.
Yes.
Is that what we're asking?
Yeah, but you've got another committee of the whole in February, do you not? February 3rd, and don't you have one on the 18th? Yeah. But the audit committee is after February 18th. Yeah.
Okay. Does that, does that answer your question, Leslie? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's after your last committee of the whole, where the public has input and you don't have the final figures yet. That's my point. Okay, and I just have one more. As you know, I'm with the Western Vancouver Island Industrial Heritage Society and the discussion's here tonight. So I am just wondering, because this is the city's collection that we maintain, operate and display, will you be involving the AV museum when it comes to the discussions on the deaccession, if you decide to do that? Or in displaying or maintaining any of these vehicles into the future? In the, with the heritage society members that you're meeting with?
Sure, yeah. My assumption is that it would certainly include the manager of culture, but I will go to the CIO to answer for certain.
Yeah, I can verify that Parks, Rec and Culture would be involved in those. The museum is a department of the city.
Yeah.
And the manager of culture oversees that. So in any of those processes, I believe the curator would be involved in that.
Okay, so it would be Willa and the curator then?
Through the chair, it may not be exactly as you're talking about. I believe staff may have a look at it. I couldn't guarantee who would actually be at the meeting. I would say that they would be involved in the process. But I'm sure in discussions with the Industrial Heritage Society, you'll find out who will all be in the meetings. Currently, we're looking at all the different options for the buildings. And I believe the other motion will be acted on if passed by council as well.
Yeah, it's just, I think the museum staff probably has a better understanding of the collection than perhaps the director of Parks, Rec and Culture. So a little more information from a little more staff might be important to the discussion. That's all I'd like to say, and I just hope that they're invited. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leslie. Is there anyone else who has any questions? Jolene?
Thank you. I've transformed. My, Jolene Dick, Argyle Street, Port Alberni, CEO, Alberni Valley, Chamber of Commerce. I have two questions, I think. Caution on that, too. My first question was, I saw AV COC visitor center contract on the schedule, I think, that the CFO has presented. And we received the notification of termination. And I saw when we were looking at that schedule presented to you that there was a community gaming grant associated with that. I'm curious, is that community gaming grant discontinued? Where would that be reallocated? If those funds are not going to be contributed to the visitor info services that we provide as the chamber underneath a fee-for-service contract?
Director of Finance?
So council has the ability to assign those funds to the eligible projects that they deem fit. Right now, those are unassigned.
Thank you. So uncertain at this time. Further direction would be needed.
Okay, I will continue requesting those. So please do expect that communication from us, your director of corporate services outlined the plan to move forward on that. My second question is just, I guess, the Industrial Heritage Society made their case about just a lack of engagement. And I guess, I think user groups in the Alberni Valley are members, the Curling Club and IHS are both members of the Chamber of Commerce. I think from the lens that you, council or the committee today is, you know, your scope is, this is the process, it's black and white, and this is how we do it. And I think when the public perceives or reads correspondence on the website, there could be that surprise. And so I just maybe encourage more further engagement through the liaisons that are on these boards to actually be a little more effective. You know, the termination of our visitor information center contract was also a surprise. You know, that we do have a liaison on our board as well for this. And it was a notification of termination of the current contract, as it states. We were invited to reengage and get a new one, but I just think, what's the point of having a liaison if there's no liaison moving forward? So I guess, I don't know exactly what my question is on that one, but some feedback to consider when we conduct business and maybe some questions in how we use our liaisons that we have on boards of city council and our agreements.
Sure, I can see that Mayor Minions would like to respond to your question, so go ahead.
Thank you. And whether that was a question or not, I do have a response. Appreciate that feedback, Jolene. And I will just say on the chamber, we set that meeting for the, to discuss the contract with you within a few days of, of council making that decision because we did not want to wait for, you know, a monthly chamber meeting or that type of thing. So we also felt it was worth more of a direct one-on-one conversation rather than a liaison bringing a message. So I think where that can be, sometimes the liaison can be a useful role in that sense. I think it likely wouldn't have been here, and we were trying to communicate both ways as soon as possible. So that's kind of the rationale for that, why the liaison wasn't used in that way, in that situation.
Councillor Mealy, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, and this is something that I have talked to you in, and it is in the minutes of the IHS, especially the last meeting. So it's, and I'm not putting it on anybody, but it is, in the minutes, we did discuss it, and there was an IHC committee formed at the last meeting for the IHS. So, but again, the people are more than welcome to come and come in force and have the discussion here as well. So, yeah, so as liaison, I believe that I brought this forward at the right time to the IHS.
Yeah, and I'll just add that I, I think that we can certainly acknowledge that there's always work to do to improve on our practices and our communication. I have no problem admitting that. I think that you can always do better. And, you know, I also think that it's, some messages are just going to be hard to take, no matter how you deliver it, and that's also a factor. But in this case, you know, certainly in the future, we can, we can keep today's experiences in mind.
Does she have any other questions?
I have one more question. Thank you for the response and feedback on that and just more insights to your decision-making. I think this is healthy dialogue, and I certainly appreciate it. You know, the, the essence of an advocacy organization is hard on policy, soft on people. So I see that we're, I'm the one kind of keeping you here between your families and to the birthday girl. So, okay, good. She will have sweet dreams. My, I just want to say, I understand, and these conversations help, you know, hopefully carve the path forward on engagement with user groups, not-for-profits, anyone that wants to enter a contract with the city of Port Alberni. Just one piece of consideration, I fully have compassion that the city has inherited numerous assets. When we think about how a city is built, it's built by people and it's built by the private sector. And then, then you kind of get people and you need to get people in the seats to govern and start facilitating decision-making between the people that live there and businesses. But I know that there was this thought of the industrial heritage collection as a gift. And I remember quite a few years ago that there was policies to consider, you know, expanding the collection or decreasing the collection. But I wouldn't, I would argue that the, the industrial heritage collection isn't the only gift that the city receives. I think back in the height of the forestry days and the boom, private sectors stepped up to install ball fields and the like. You know, we have the Warehouser Arena at the multiplex and other naming rights that are probably legacy. And just for consideration, is Warehouser Arena, does it still deserve that name? And so when we think of opportunities for revenue generation, naming rights is a huge business. When you think of GM Place in Vancouver, switching to Rogers Arena, there potentially is some areas that the private sector could invest and reinvest in our assets. The Industrial Heritage Centre is called the Heritage Centre. Could a private corporate citizen get naming rights to these things to help offset some of these costs? So I just, I want to put that there as a new, fresh perspective and idea, because I understand you have a lot of things on your shopping list and things that you have to consider on what you want and need, and I wanted to put that forward as a recommendation. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for the question. CIO?
Yeah, thanks for that input. Last year, me and the economic development manager talked about, and you'll see on the work plan, a sponsorship policy. That does include naming rights. You know, we've worked for communities that have had very robust naming rights and how it is formed. Again, other priorities take staff away from it, but it is on the work plan for this year.
Awesome. Anyone in the chamber can help? We're happy to. Thank you.
Thanks, Jolene. Yeah, how many, could I just quickly review how many speakers we're allowed to take during this period? Okay, all right, yeah, go ahead, come on up.
Paul Blake, Industrial Heritage Society. I'm on the committee to try to put something together for you. And there's some information I'd like to get. I've been trying to get it since around November the 18th. One is the details of the asset management projects that have been identified for the Industrial Heritage Society or the centre, because we've wandered the site several times looking for the quarter-million-dollar wall for paint. And we did energy audits and upgrades. So we're just trying to figure out where all that came from. And, you know, councillor Petola wanting specifics rather than generalities, and we would like that, too. So we can't, we can't make decisions without knowing you got 300 grand that you want to spend in 2025, which you seem to think is 1% of your budget. I don't see anything in that year that is pertinent. I mean, I've heard the discussions tonight. And another item that you've been talking about is the 42,000 that is allotted for the industrial heritage collection. I see that that's been on motions a couple of times. And I'd like to get two years' worth of transactions that make up that 42,000, because we don't know what makes it up, even though we manage the collection. We don't know, this could be considered industrial heritage here. I mean, there's some might be out of the mill, down at the train station. We don't know what makes that, that line item up. And I would like to get a breakdown of it. I've discussed it with people, but I've never gotten a specific. So I thought tonight would be, you're talking about liaison and stakeholders, so I thought that might be pertinent.
Sure, yeah. No, I appreciate it. I think that we can certainly try to answer those questions tonight, but I have a feeling that those are going to be probably things for us to write down and have included as a part of the dialogue that staff will be opening up with you. But I'll go to the CIO.
Sure, yeah. As we move forward, if the motions passed, we'll be able to get into details and have those discussions. The facility condition report, we had just the itemized areas that came forward, the report wasn't complete. I believe in the, I can't remember soon, but soon, the facility report will come forward to council, which will have all the specifics in it. And I'm sure staff would be more than happy to sit down and have those conversations with you.
Earlier tonight, a gentleman that was with Willa was quoting from that report, so it must be somewhere. And to be, to want to just know how it works, you guys passed a motion in committee tonight. Your next regular meeting is on the 27th, probably a week after that for preparation. I've been waiting since November 18th. Is that about the speed you work with the budget?
Through the chair, I think the facility assessment report, the parts that the manager was talking to, I believe was in the, in the report, either from before Christmas or this time. It is in draft format, and once it is finalized, it will come through council. Once council receives, we do provide that to public. Again, the actual breakdown of finances and as we get into more detail about what is all encompassed in certain areas of the budget, I'm sure that as we move forward here, we'll be able to have those discussions with you.
So that means I won't have to wait until after the motion is carried at the regular meeting?
Just wanted to address the industrial collection. So in the package tonight, you can see that the breakdown of the industrial collection by category is in the financial plan.
But there's not, like you say, like 17,000 per month or per year on insurance?
No, actually, the $17,000 is not included in this amount, so we're making that change. So that's on top of the, the 42,000.
So that's an addition from what before?
If you review the financial plan that's included in tonight's agenda, you can see the breakdown, because usually that was a one-line item. But with the level of service detail we're providing, it's providing that opportunity to better understand what is going into the services that were provided.
And that's on the agenda, isn't it?
Yeah, it's right in the agenda. I'm looking at it right now, and I can review with you right after the meeting if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, yeah, thanks for your questions. Oh, and Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just going to speak to that part being in the agenda tonight. And as well, although the full master or capital plan is not available yet, facilities master plan, the details that we are working from are in the budget tonight as well. And so I think all the information that Paul is looking for should be there and available. So, yeah, if Andrew can review after, that would be great. And if there's additional questions, Paul, they can be asked in a council meeting or emailed to us and then added to our budget question and answer, so that they're on record and you get the information, but council gets it as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? Joseph, come on up.
Long, long meeting. Just with Mr. Anderson's thing, sort of a little confusion on input and question period. Myself also, I'm trying to learn to follow it as closely as I can. So with that in mind, because earlier during input period, there was kind of a bit of a discussion or some feedback, I'd like to carry on in that vein without a question, because I sort of missed that opportunity earlier. So the question was, or the comments was put back to me about grants and knowing my facts, don't really. I'm just a person in the public, trying to do a little bit in the community and get involved a bit. But what I do, and I didn't bring it up because I thought I'm just throwing things out. I'm glad, Mr. Mealy, that you have brought up the whole idea of getting back with the people that are there having a discussion moving forward, and it might involve grants. But that whole thing is an opportunity to look at this and see what can be done. But that whole thing is an opportunity to, to look at this and see what can be done. I'm really, that's really cool. But regarding grants, sitting in the gallery tonight, I was talking to some people in the gallery and somebody mentioned a few years back, they didn't say how long ago there was painting done at the IHS, at the Industrial Heritage, that involved a grant. That's what I was told. And another thing that I looked up before I came here and I didn't mention it because I thought, I don't know about grants. I'm not a grant writer. I've never applied for a grant. But I hear they're kind of doled out here and there and everywhere sometimes. And, but one of the things I did do before I came here was I looked up curling rinks, grants, new builds, that sort of thing. And in Campbell River, they put a new roof on, I think, two years ago, something like that. They received a grant, partial grant. Anyhow, so that was just, but just in comments to what I didn't, because I wasn't doing the back and forth earlier. So just to bring that up and thanks again for that.
Sure.
Yeah. So that's it, just to, that's not a question though.
Yeah. In the future, you could do us a solid and, and try to make it into a question, just so.
Right.
But, you know, I think it is important that we do have some respect for, for the procedures by law.
Yes.
And, but yeah, you know, obviously we appreciate your, your input and your dialogue. So.
Yeah. And, and so with the input earlier, I was trying to follow it by not having that. And again, it was mentioned tonight when Mr. Anderson asked the question about, you know, when were those changed and where he was given dates? I would have rather they just read it off to me and said, this is what's in there. So I won't have to go look it up. And he all look it up. So my question for tonight is the whole plan, the whole workings of city moving forward, decisions being made, we've got all these different things, umbrella. I don't know if the OCP is the official umbrella over a lot of the decisions that are made because we're working hard and rather long to see an official community plan brought forward again. And with that in mind, there's something called, I think, a strategic community plan. I think there's, there's a number of things that fall underneath. So which one is the big umbrella that they're underneath? I don't know. But one of them that I've heard of recently, and, and I'm curious, somebody can define this for me, something called the council strategic plan. When council's elected, they come up with their own strategic plan? And can somebody please explain me what a council strategic plan is? And how does that fall underneath the umbrella of what a community already has asked for in an official community plan?
Sure, yeah. You know, and open to others chiming in here. But council strategic plan is essentially another guiding document that sets the specific goals and priorities for that council for that term, whereas the OCP is a much higher level, more long-term guiding document. So the two certainly work together and, and shouldn't be in conflict with one another, but serve different purposes, different timelines, different, yeah. Anybody have anything to add to that? All right.
So who then sets that strategic plan for that sitting act of council and mayor at that time? And we heard earlier about not putting your hands in your neighbor's pocket and regarding something. And each time the city does something, you're indeed putting your hands in somebody's pocket. Decisions are made regarding SOMAS, key-to-key, multiplex. Indeed, you're doing that. You're asking the taxpayer for money. So indeed, you are putting your hands in your neighbor's pocket. So the way you do that, and we know we need to do that because you need a community that has, we heard, core values. What are the core values? What are the core things that, I don't think it's core values, but core principal things that the city is focusing on? And so we know there's lots of things, like you even said yourself, there's lots of different things that, how do you interpret that? We all have our views on that, what that might look like from health, safety to culture. So with that in mind, how do you engage? And I know the idea, okay, you want due diligence, you want public engagement, you want consensus. And then the community makes, I may not like them, you know, I'm going to say, I may not like the multiplex, that's a huge cost. But as a community that's decided on, I go along with it, right? But how do you come to consensus and make sure that due diligence is done so that those things are, and yeah, you're not going to please it because all those things are outside the parameters, as you said earlier, outside of core things necessary. So again, it's just like this thing of, of strategic plan council. It just seems like where is that? Yeah, so I just don't understand that. Sometimes it seems like it goes in a different direction. Again, the hands are in your neighbor's pocket in a sense, but that's, is that a question? So what is strategic? That's what I think I was asking, what does that mean? And how does that fit within the overall vision of what a community has been saying for years? Looking at the history, I have a lot of history here, the things you've made that you're sitting behind speaks of history, speaks of origins, speaks of a tree that gave up its stance to be put here and it's traveled a journey. You have to remember those things that come from the past to move forward. You have to engage and it's just kind of a, that's why I think a lot of things, anyhow, I'm rambling. But thank you for your time. Thank you, Todd, again for your input earlier and thank you, my council and acting council. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Joseph. And, and just to answer what I think I heard was a question there, I think that that is an ever-evolving thing in communities and in how we gain community input. It's, it's something that constantly changes and we're always trying to improve on and build on and utilize new methods in each different situation. Some, you know, requires different forms of, of engagement and that's one of the big challenges. So, yeah, it is a good question. It's a thing to constantly keep in focus for sure. But ultimately, it is a democratic system where the community has empowered us to make decisions on their behalf. And, and it really is up to us how, what level of community engagement that we want to get into. And, and so, yeah, that's, and with, with that, is there anybody else with questions? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chair.
Second, all in favor? Carrie.